Okay, I think we're ready to get started. Good evening and welcome to the, sorry, what's the date today? Of the March 28th, 2022, meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the request of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting, to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the Board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. Those procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. You can see we have a full house tonight, so we're gonna be sticking to those procedures. Speaking on behalf of the entire Board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible, while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the community, and the larger community. With that, I'd like to introduce the members of our Board, and I'll start to my right with you, Mr. Bass.
All right, Bass, Ward Two.
Jamie Moorhead, Ward One.
Lisa Neering, Ward Three.
Nancy Novak, Ward One.
B. Clemmons, Ward Three.
And I'm Michael Seaman, I'm also Ward Three. I'd like to also introduce our staff, Michelle Frederick and Kathy Serniak. Thank you for all that you do for us. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, consideration of the minutes of the February 28th, 2022 meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes, and are there any questions or comments or points of clarification? Nope, see none. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Move that we approve the minutes from the February 28th meeting.
Second.
Do we need a roll vote, or can we do a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of requests for approval of an amendment to the special use permit for Woodlands Academy to permit the replacement and addition of tennis courts, reconfiguration of a parking area, and the addition of a vehicular turnaround, all generally located at the rear of the academic building near the northeast corner of the campus. The property address is 760 East Wesley Road. The property owners are Woodlands Academy of the Sacred Heart, Representatives Linda Mooney and Catherine Talte. Before we get into this item, I'd like to ask the Board for any declarations of conflicts of interest or ex parte contact.
I received a letter in the mail which I forwarded to city staff, as well as a text message, which again, I forwarded to city staff.
I do too.
Thank you.
Me too.
So did I.
As did I, so. I think we're okay there. We're gonna move forward to number three, swearing, swearing in of the parties to intend to testify. At this time, we have a number of people that filled out forms with requests to speak. I would ask that we swear everybody in right now to expedite the process and make sure that the time is allocated, so that everybody gets their chance to, to share their thoughts. So, anybody that is intending to speak tonight, I'd ask you, do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you will give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to invite the petitioner up to the front, and I assume we swore you in just there.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and, you know, it says here, "Presentation by petitioner not to exceed ten minutes," and twenty minutes for special use permit. So, you know, this is a special use permit modification request. I'd like to see if we could stick to the twenty minutes, but understand if you need to go over, we certainly don't want to impair your ability to make a full presentation, recognizing there may likely be questions from the Board, and we do have requests for cross-examination later, so there will likely be questions, so we do invite you to be thorough now, as it may answer a number of questions. So, with that, please proceed.
I've timed myself a number of times with this presentation, so hopefully we'll be close to, to the limit. I want to thank the Board, first of all, for allowing us the opportunity to present this proposal for the improvement to the Woodlands campus. My name is Catherine Talte. I'm a landscape architect and a parent of a sophomore currently at Woodlands. I've been practicing now for 27 years, I say that wincingly, and I am the author of the plans that you'll see presented today. With me is Mike Black, the civil engineer, who will be presenting, and Kathy Hudson, a real estate professional, will also be presenting on our behalf. And then, in attendance, I have Linda Mooney, who is the Chair of the Board of Trustees of Woodlands, and Bob O'Donnell, who's of legal counsel to us, and they'll answer questions if need be. So, I'm just gonna click through this. Just to give you a little background on Woodlands, we are an independent Catholic college prep day and boarding school for young women in grades nine through 12, so high school age. The institution was founded in 1858, and we established a campus at 760 East Wesley in 1904. So, we've been a resident of Lake Forest for 118 years proudly. Our current enrollment is 133 young women, 21 of them board, and five staff members stay on campus with them, and therefore, we have full-time security. We are high-achieving academically, we're recognized as a national blue ribbon school, we're currently enjoying the distinction of being the number-one Catholic school in the state of Illinois. We do believe in a healthy mind, healthy body. So, all students in our curriculum take physical education for four years, which is unusual, and it's about 25 girls per class. We currently offer six different sports, including tennis, and 18 of our girls played tennis this year. All right, today, we, we seek a modest but meaningful improvement to the Woodlands Academy campus. The scope of this project includes the replacement of two outdated tennis courts with five new tennis courts, and the reconfiguration and paving of two existing gravel parking areas. This project will allow the school's athletic and physical education programs to remain vibrant, while improving stormwater management, ADA accessibility on the site, and supplementing the natural vegetative border along the north property line. This will promote outdoor education at a time when we realize the importance of fresh air for our students. What I have on the screen right now is an approved master plan that was, that was approved by the City in 2012. I think this was in your packet as well. This is, this was born of the combining of Woodlands campus with the Barra College campus. So, that is the, the master plan, we use this for our strategic planning and any kind of facility improvements, we come back to this master plan. This aerial shot is the existing conditions of the campus. This close-up aerial is the project location. So, a couple of things I'd like to point out, and I don't know if I can put a cursor on this, there we go, so you can see. This road is existing, it's a paved asphalt driveway. These two areas are existing gravel parking areas. This here is the gymnasium, and this is the entrance to the gym. These are our current tennis courts, which we estimate have been in place since nineteen, at least 1965. We have photographic records and yearbooks in 1965 of those tennis courts being there. And just south of these tennis courts is a field that we use for PE classes adjacent to the building. Just to give some historic perspective and show you that this use has been in place for, for a while, I'm including some aerial photographs, June 2020, April 2013, September 2008, March 2002. This goes back 20 years, we've always used this space the way it is shown today. We really thought about this, and we employed a design process when we put together the plans that you're seeing proposed in front of you today. We started by developing a program of objectives or goals for this. We had some necessary improvements to make, we have some stormwater issues that, that we need to resolve, including occasional flooding into the gym building whenever there are hard rains. Our courts need maintenance, those tennis courts need maintenance, our aesthetics need improvement, and the safety of those parking areas have come into question. The school has strategic goals for this area as well. Athletic programming is more and more critical for enrollment. You know, girls play sports, and, and it's important to the, to the health of the school. So, so once we did that, we reviewed our master plan to see if this was kind of in keeping with what we have anticipated over the years. We developed preliminary plans. We had a conversation with Kathy at the City of Lake Forest, she guided us through this application process, and asked us to perform a site evaluation on the campus, and determine if there were any alternate locations for this project, which we've done, and I'll get back to that in the, in the presentation. We voluntarily held an open house for the neighbors. On January 18th, we invited all of our adjacent neighbors to preview the plans and hear their concerns, and then, we analyzed the specially-used criteria against the plans that we put together. So, getting back to the project goals, the first was to solve our stormwater issues, which we'll do. The next goal is to improve the automobile circulation that takes place, that serves the gym on the north side of the building. So, automobile in circulation, parking improvements, and it is our goal to increase the safety and reduce traffic congestion in that area. We know a controlled access road and striped parking will create a safer vehicular situation. We added a drop-off, and the drop-off is intended to reduce the backup, backup beeping noise and backup of traffic getting cars in and out of that space without causing conflicts. Efficient automobile ingress and egress to the gym. And this is all with the goal of emptying that parking lot more efficiently and quicker. We wanted to include proper accessible spots for not only handicap accessible needs, but also for accommodations for grandparents and visitors that may have mobility issues. And then, it, it's important to us to provide access to emergency vehicles, you know, you need potentially an ambulance at the gym. The additional tennis courts are our plan to keep the school vibrant and competitive. We have a strong tennis team. Our tennis team currently has to split and half-practice at, at Woodlands and half-practice at a public park, wherever they can get space. And to facilitate gym class programming. So, right now, we have the two courts, we have a gym class of 20, 24 kids, and half of them are hanging out, just waiting to use the courts. So, we wanted to accommodate them. And then, finally, a goal is to improve the visitor experience of that area, and the aesthetic of that northern border. So, we go back to the master plan, and this is just a shot of the location of our project. The top row of pictures, this is all, I believe, in your packet, the top row of pictures are the area of improvement for the automobile circulation, so you can see the two gravel pads, you can see the asphalt pad, we have one handicap accessible spot, and that walk is the entrance to our gym. I think it's important to note that because we have borders, and we have gym activities, we need to secure the building. So, it's important for us that gym activities are entered in through a controlled space. And so, our school building is locked up from the front entrance to the gym after hours, and that's really to protect the kids that are borders in the, in the space. And then, the pictures below, that row of pictures below are the area of improvement for the tennis courts. So, that's kind of capturing the length of that border where the tennis courts are going, and exist. This here is a, the proposed site plan, this is also in your packet. Just taking you through it really quickly, this is the access road and turnaround drop-off that we are discussing. We have tried to maintain the current line, you can see underneath, underneath this drawing is the aerial photograph, so we are trying to stay consistent with the existing driveway, and we're trying to utilize the eastern gravel area for the turnaround, and the western gravel area for a small parking lot. In total, we're providing 26 spots, that's not increasing the spots that we currently have, it's just organizing them. And in, in an effort to address some of the information that we got from our neighbors, all the parking spots you can see are loaded towards the building. So, this is, you know, intentional to keep the headlights out of the neighbor's property, you know, off of that property line. We then go to the tennis courts, there will be pedestrian circulation built into this parking lot as well, so you see some paths, reconstructed path to the gym, path to the tennis courts. These are our, the, the proposed tennis courts. You can see this space here is the existing tennis court, it's approximately 12 feet away from the property line now. So, we are sliding these tennis courts back to 25 feet from the property line, and this will allow us some space to, to get some landscape screening in between the courts and the property lines. And then, to the south of the tennis court, we have some retaining walls just to maintain the grade, and the stormwater management will take place south of the tennis courts. As I mentioned, we have some space now to create a landscape buffer, so we have really landscaped this with a variety of plants, evergreen, deciduous ornamental trees, to give us a variety of heights and a level of screening that doesn't exist today. We currently have, you know, a natural woodland border that is now mostly buckthorn and, you know, what naturally grows in these areas. So, that's what we have now. Our goal is to really improve the landscape on that border and just create a better aesthetic for, for the neighbors and for us. I paid close attention to where yards fall and where these evergreens fall, all of this was done intentionally. I believe there's universal benefits to this improvement. The aesthetic value, number one, along the north property line will be greatly improved. The landscaping, we are not sparing expense, the landscaping is very lush. The tennis courts are moving further from the property line than they currently exist. The driveway and gravel parking areas get improved and organized, so the use is not changing, and the operations of that space are not changing, they're, but they're getting better, they're getting more organized, and our, our goal is to move traffic through there more efficiently, so the parking lot empties quicker after basketball games or what have you. With the pavement become, comes the elimination of gravel, so you're eliminating gravel dust, you're eliminating migration of the gravel, you're eliminating noise of crunching. And I, as I mentioned, the cars will exit more efficiently. Woodlands is going to establish a no idle zone, so we are going, going to create a policy that cars cannot idle back there, buses or any other commercial vehicles cannot stand and idle and wait. And that, that's going to be a policy that we, we will implement, we heard the neighbors and understand that's a concern. And then, another improvement is that we have existing on-building lighting, and that is being improved. I think I should mention, I don't know if I did, but these tennis courts are not going to be lit. The tennis courts are intended to be used only during daytime hours, they're not, not going to be lit. And all of the spectating opportunities are taking place from this southern portion of the tennis courts. As I mentioned, the City requested that we do, we perform a site analysis to explore other options for these tennis courts, and so, we did. But I think it's important to note that the site, even though the campus feels big, and we've gotten a lot of feedback that we have such a big campus, why can't it be somewhere else? There are a lot of naturally occurring encumbrances to the, the campus that really shrink the building envelope for us. So, we have natural ravines on the campus, as everyone knows, preserved woodlands, conservation easement, and some serious grade change. And then, we had our own design considerations, including constructability of these courts, student safety, the aesthetic impact to the campus and to the public way, future campus improvements, we have goals to potentially improve our campus from a building standpoint, and then, our own school operations and curricular integration for these tennis courts. So, Location A, I'm gonna go through this quickly, Mike Black is gonna speak about the engineering challenges and constructability challenges that we have, but I'm gonna take you through some of the other issues that we feel like these locations present. Location A is next to the softball field. We feel that this is so far away from the building that it's impossible to use this as a PE, to use this for our gym classes. So, the tennis courts could, you know, the, a major use for us would be eliminated by putting it into, in this location. And Location A also lends some space for potential campus expansion. It's away from the neighbors, but it's a good site for a potential building. There are some safety issues in that it conflicts with the softball use, and then, there are some engineering and constructability issues that Mike will talk about in a minute. Location B is east of the existing soccer field. This has a, a very negative aesthetic impact in that the courts are now facing Wesley Road. You'll be presented with the court that is, that Mike will speak about is going to have a retaining wall and an additional fencing component. This also is very far away from the school building, and this location eliminates two large trees, several new memorial trees that we've been establishing in this area, and it eliminates any opportunity to expand that conservation easement that's to the east. There's a conflict with the dedicated quiet path, which is an open walk, open to the residents of Lake Forest, it's a meditative walk that has been dedicated, so that would need to be relocated if possible. And as I mentioned, there's some engineering issues. Location C is adjacent to the Gloria Day Center. The biggest issue that we have with this location is that this would be the number-one area where we would expand our campus from a building perspective. It's the geographic center of our campus, and the most ideal for a building expansion. We currently use this open space for large community gatherings, our school, whole school community gatherings, because it is geometrically in the center of campus and away from all of the neighboring properties. And again, it has an issue with the quiet path, and it is located far from our school building. I'm gonna turn this over, give you guys a break from listening to my voice, and turn this over to Mike Black for a little bit to speak about these, about the engineering issues.
Good evening, thank you, Catherine. Let me start off by saying that I think that, engineering-wise, you could probably, any one of these ones you could build on if you have enough money. But what I was asked to do is to take a look and identify some of the challenges associated with these sites. So, on this one here, you can see there's some contour lines on there, and a couple things in, with tennis courts, the two main design considerations would be the orientation of the tennis courts, preferably in a north-south direction, and then, secondly, is the slope, you want them relatively flat. And so, in confirming the orientation of it, I looked at other facilities in town, and I looked at all of the six community parks that the City of Lake Forest has that have tennis courts, and they have about 23, 24 tennis courts, they're all oriented north-south like this. So, that's the preferred way to do it. In this particular location here, with the cemetery in the upper right-hand, left-hand corner, and the softball field there, I would suggest that, to do this court, you would try to match those grades with, matching close to grade by the softball diamond, and then, match the grade by the road next to the cemetery and up to the cell tower. And so, you would carry this 694 across the north edge of the court, 695 across the south edge of the court, which puts you five feet above grade at the northeast corner, seven feet above grade at the southeast corner, and that puts you 13 feet above the road right here. So, I think you'd need a earth retention system, whether that would be reinforced concrete wall, or segmental block or something. My, my experience with something like this, that I would suggest it would probably be a reinforced concrete wall. And so, I've kind of identified where I think you might have a wall on here, where you'd have it on the east edge of it, and then, as you slope, go back up the hill, you'd terminate when you get about two feet of height on the wall. And for this one, I estimated that overall, you have an average of about four feet of exposed face on that wall, so if you got four feet above grade, you're likely gonna have four feet or more below grade. So, I estimated that this was about 230 feet long, eight feet high. And then, in terms of the cost of it, I did a couple years ago, I did a couple retaining walls for the City Highland Park that were similar to this, one a taller wall and a shorter, and one a shorter wall. And looking at those costs just for the concrete and the rebar, it came out to about $130 a square foot, and that was 2019 numbers, which we're not gonna see that now with steel prices and stuff. So, I bumped that up to $150 a square foot, so I'm guessing that this is gonna be in around $275,000, which, you know, isn't an all-in cost, you'd still have to bring material in to raise up the east end of the courts, whether they be clay or gravel. And then, in each of these options, you're building five new courts versus really three new courts in the other one, because there's two courts there that you just gotta put a new surface on. So, the next one? Okay, this one is, you've got the soccer field to the left, and you've got the roadway to the right. Soccer field is crowned in the middle, and it cheats to the sides, and so, the east edge of the soccer field is pretty level, 696. And if you take a look at the grade out there by Sheridan Road, this is 10 feet lower right here. So, in this instance here, I thought that if we tried to, you can look at, look at this two ways, you can say, I'm gonna set the courts up to the soccer field elevation and put a retaining wall on the roadside. And looking at that, then you'd have a retaining wall up in this corner and coming around, and then, that starts to get to be blocking sightlines, and, you know, it seemed to me to be creating a, not a safe condition. So, I looked at it from the other way, where you try to match the grade next to the roadway and put the retaining wall on the soccer, soccer field side. So, for the two south courts, we matched the grade at the southeast corner at 689.5, which is meeting the grade here, and by the time you get to this corner, you're down four feet, you're down five and a half feet along the north edge of it. Then, for the other three, I figured we would step it, so that we would, these courts are two feet higher than the south courts. So, in this one here, we matched the grade at the northeast corner, and you're two feet below grade here, three and a half feet below grade in this corner, two feet in this corner. So, this particular arrangement ends up with close to 500 feet of wall, and they're shorter walls, not as high, I'm guessing that maybe has like seven feet, but it gets to be quite expensive. Next. This is another one, like, I was out there today, and, and when you drive along this roadway and you say, well, this looks pretty flat, but when you get to the, the last two courts, the grade drops off real quickly. So, in this instance- get to the, the last two courts, the grade drops off real quickly. So, in this instance here, since we have the sidewalk in the existing building there, I thought, well, you could probably cut this down a foot or two to get, you know, not to get too far out of the ground over here. So, this sets this couple feet below the building, the grade next to the building, a foot and a half below the sidewalk. But still, at that point, by the time you get out to this corner, you're nine feet above grade, which gets to be quite a big wall. And in this instance here, I'm guessing that you're gonna have around 320 feet of retaining wall and a cost of about $384,000 plus the other things that go along with it. So, that's, again, that's probably not an all-in cost. Next. Okay, so, we wanted to just show that some other facilities in town that are next to residential neighborhoods. And I know that they're not, every one of them's got their own uniqueness to them, but we just wanted to point out, some facilities are next to residential. So, this is Waveland Park, the city's park, and it's next to single-family residential. I think that's about 40 feet away, I believe. This is Lake Forest High School. The south edge of these tennis courts is about 20 feet from the property line. There's 12 courts. Here, you can see the, the space between the tennis courts and the fencing. So, it's pretty tight in here. This is Lake Forest College. Lake Forest College has got theirs, I think, about 21 feet off the property line. But the space between the tennis courts and the property line is what they use as their viewing area, where they have some bleachers in there. So, this is very close to the property line. And this is the Winter Club. The Winter Club, I believe, is about three and a half feet off the property line. It's very close to the neighbor as well. So, I know they're all different situations, but, you know, these kinds of conditions do exist elsewhere in the community. Thank you.
Lake Forest Academy was another site, and that was a ball field. But, but as Mike said, we just wanna show that there are, there are precedents in this community for athletic uses next to residential homes. One reoccurring question comes up about the impact on real estate values. And it's a very difficult thing to put a finger on. So, we've employed the opinion of a real estate expert, and today, we have with us Kathy Hudson. We have, you have a letter in your packet from Maureen Tuohy, who could not be here today. But Kathy is here, and she can give her anecdotal opinion about selling real estate in this community.
Hi, my name is Kathy Hudson, and I've been selling real estate in Lake Forest for over 25 years. I'm currently with GGL Compass. And I've sold a lot of houses in the Northmore neighborhood, just north of Woodlands. And in my personal experience, the adjacency to Woodlands has never been a detriment to a buyer or a seller. I've sold on the south side of Highview Terrace. And in fact, my clients and I have all looked at it as a benefit to have those courts and that school behind them. They're a quiet neighbor generally. And people seem to prefer that than staring at another house. And when we look at the sales on Highview Terrace, they've been robust with Woodlands there. And in my professional opinion, I think the improvements that Woodlands is talking about making to the tennis courts and the parking are only going to improve that, not hinder it. I really don't see the improvements that Woodlands is making as anything but an improvement to real estate on Highview, not a detriment.
As I mentioned, it is a very complex thing to put your finger on. But what we've done is, we've studied three houses that are immediately adjacent to the tennis courts and three houses that were across the street on Highview. And there is relatively no detriment to having a house that backs up to Woodlands and the tennis courts specifically. As a matter of fact, they've had better increases over a period of time than the houses north on, on Highview. Though, the street has been, been very comfortably robust, the sales. So, we do not, we feel like this use doesn't change. The use has been in existence, and the results are going to be the same. So, in conclusion, I don't know how much time I've taken, probably too much, but I just wanna say that we feel that we've proven this evening that we satisfy all the criteria of the special use, of this special use to be amended. The project proposes not changing the use, but instead improving upon the existing use. The criteria by the, by which the original special use was granted have shown to be satisfied here for the last 50 years of the school's existence. The proposed controlled vehicular circulation benefits both the school and the neighborhood by increasing the safety and efficiency of the ingress and egress, instilling environmental standards, aesthetic improvements, and introducing lush landscaping. The addition of the three unlit tennis courts will allow Woodlands to conduct PE and extracurricular activities typical of any high school in Lake Forest. These activities will take place just as they have been since 1965, but in a more efficient manner, eliminating idle downtime for the participants. The reconstruction of the existing and new courts will allow us to move the facility further from the property line, making room to continue, to continue that landscape screening. We have proven through our expert analysis that claims of the reduction of property values for neighboring homes due to a project like we are proposing are unfounded. Historical data tells us that bordering Woodlands is an asset for someone purchasing a home. The Woodlands team is sincere about being a good neighbor, and we value our relationship with the City of Lake Forest. We have invested a considerable amount of thought and effort into putting forth a solution for this improvement that is appropriate, feasible, consistent with our strategic plan and mission, and beneficial to all involved. We have been open and transparent with our neighbors to the point that we have hosted an open house in January for all interested to preview our plans. I personally have visited the yards of some of our neighbors to better understand their concerns. Though some will never be happy with this development, we have attempted to incorporate their feedback into our proposed plans. This project will be a vast aesthetic improvement for the adjacent neighbors and a win-win for all involved. The school must be allowed to operate, as any high school in Lake Forest is, to be viable. We ask that you evaluate all we've provided and approve our request. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you very much. Moving down our meeting procedures to number five, it's the identification of issues by staff. Michelle, could you please, or Kathy, would you please?
Thank you, Chairman, and the members of the, of the board. I will try and keep my comments brief, given the, the length of that presentation and the number of people that wanna speak tonight. I wanna speak to four issues, or four topics. One, I wanna talk a little bit broadly about special use permits, remind you how those work in the City of Lake Forest. I wanna review just a few key points of history of Woodlands Academy. Third, I'd like to make some comments on this particular petition. And fourth, although I'm gonna do it second, I wanna make some comments about the correspondence you received. Special use permits. High level is that in Lake Forest, we do not have public land zoning. We do not have institutional zoning. We do not have some zoning districts that are common in other communities that would allow an institution such as Woodlands Academy to more or less do what they want with, without going through a public process. The special use process has been used for decades in Lake Forest to provide an opportunity for public input and to recognize that community institutions throughout our community, or throughout the, the city, really add to the unique character of the community, whether it's private schools such as Woodlands Academy, Country Day School, churches throughout our community, private clubs, Elloa Farm, Gorton Community Center. The special use process has been used successfully to allow unique uses, Lake Forest College and the hospital are two others, to coexist in residential neighborhoods. It doesn't mean there aren't problems, there are problems. Many of those instances that you saw up there simply reminded me of, of issues that we have. But in, in almost every case, we are able to resolve those. And if issues come up from time to time, we are able, able to work those through. So, the special use process allows these unique uses in residential neighborhoods. Amendments to special use permits come before the Zoning Board of Appeals. That is, when a special use permit has previously been granted. We know things grow and change and modify and react to present-day needs. Those amendments come before this body. Second, I just wanted to mention the correspondence. We've received a considerable amount of correspondence and by email, by direct mail. I know some of you received communications directly. I know we try and avoid that to make sure everything that's sent is included in the record. So, thank you to those who have forwarded that to us. We've included it in the record. We provided you correspondence in your packet. We provided you correspondence, I think, earlier this morning. And then, we received some additional correspondence and provided that to you tonight. So, I apologize if, if we have missed something along the way. We have been alerted that there are perhaps some correspondence that we've missed. We did do an email search today. So, to the best of our knowledge, the best of our ability, we've given you everything that we have. Anything else that, that comes in, we'll include as part of the record. That correspondence is made available to the City Council as well. So, it doesn't need to be resubmitted. Third, just a bit of history. As you heard, Woodlands Academy has been a part, a valued institution in Lake Forest for over 100 years. And I, along with at least a couple people in this audience, have worked on a number of really challenging Woodlands issues. We've worked, the city and Woodlands, previous board members, previous staff members have worked very closely together. And we always have been able to resolve issues really in, to Woodlands' credit, a very creative way, a way that benefits Woodlands Academy and really adds to its viability, and in a way that benefits the entire community. In this, in the staff report, I did briefly review some of the earlier special use permits that were granted. The first special use permit for Woodlands Academy was granted in 1998. Woodlands Academy at this location was constructed, I believe, in 1961, when it moved out of Old Main, or, or in the early 60s. A special use permit was not required by the code at that time. So, there was no public process that, that we could determine. In 1998, Woodlands Academy came forward and wanted to do, in addition to the, the front of their building, added a main entrance, added some offices and conference rooms. At that time, the council acknowledged Woodlands Academy as a pre-existing institution and approved the additions that were proposed. There was a later amendment to that, which added the Science Center and proposed an additional building, generally in the vicinity of the tennis courts. The Science Wing was built. The other portion of that special use permit was not built. And then, in 2012 and 2013, there were, there was a series of amendments to the special use permit as the former Barra Campus was reconsolidated with Woodlands Academy campus. It was originally a single parcel, and it's been brought back together. The controlling special use permit is a special use permit that was granted in 2013. And you do have that master plan in your packet. It's a high-level master plan. It didn't provide a great deal of specifics. And what we see with master plans, depending on the institution, depending on what the issues are, depending on whether there's controversy, master plans for special uses can be very detailed, or they can be not so detailed. There can be portions of the plan that are very detailed and other portions that are vaguer. We, we've heard the question, what are the required setbacks for the Woodlands Academy property? Because it is a special use permit, facilities, buildings, parking lots, tennis courts, those are approved at a particular location based on the master plan. So, although this is in the R4 zoning district, a residential zoning district, those same setbacks aren't directly applicable because this is a special use, which says the Zoning Board and ultimately the City Council have to approve a, a plan. So, that's a bit of history that, that gets us to where we are today. You've seen a, a number of air photos in the packet. You saw some information presented by Ms. Talty that show that this northwest, northeast corner of the campus has been historically used, been developed as tennis courts, as parking with a driveway. So, we know, from the air photos, we found that this has been in existence since the 70s. We just heard that it's likely been in existence perhaps since the school was constructed in the early to mid 60s. So, this area has been an active area. We do know that at the time, Woodlands Academy, Academy was constructed in the early 60s, that some of those homes, not all of them, but many of the homes that bordered the campus already existed. Many of those were built in the 50s, early 60s, perhaps some in the 40s, perhaps some in the 30s. What we do know is that over time, the, the parking area behind the gym there at Woodlands Academy has, has morphed a bit in character. We don't show that there was a particular plan with a certain number of parking spaces and landscaping and asphalt that was approved. So, we know what goes on right now back there is a bit haphazard. And certainly, what's proposed is an intent to improve that. The questions that remain for city staff really are, and, and we heard more tonight, have all the alternatives really thoroughly been studied? We received more information tonight, both from Ms. Talty and Mr. Black. Who are the users of this area? How is it used? Is it just Woodlands Academy students? Are there other users? When is it used? We've heard that there would be no lighting on the tennis courts, which certainly limits the hours of operation. And the other question that remains for staff is, are there perhaps modifications? Are there operational parameters that could be put in place that speak to how and when and how often this is being used? Are there some physical improvements that could be added? I personally have gone out to Woodlands Academy some evenings when I've received calls that there's vehicular activity back there. Headlights are an issue on those homes. Could something as simple as a solid six-foot or seven-foot fence be beneficial along that property line? And, and really mark that transition between an institutional use and single-family residential homes, in fact, the private areas of those single-family residential homes. Certainly, the landscaping that's proposed is commendable, but in this case, a solid wood fence may actually be better. Could those few spaces that are closest, the few parking spaces that are closest to the property line that perhaps cars could back into, could those be eliminated and some additional landscaping put in that place? Is there any opportunity to put operational parameters in place that could put some parameters around when this area is used by vehicles? We did hear tonight that there's security on-site at all times. We certainly wouldn't want operational parameters that Woodlands couldn't live with or that couldn't be enforced. So, from staff's perspective, we believe there is a, a balance that can be struck here. Many, much of what's proposed here will result in improvements to the current situation. From staff perspective, perspective, it may be less the tennis courts and more the, the vehicular turnaround that, that may be a use that needs some mitigation from the impacts it could cause on single-family residential homes. With that, we would encourage the board to ask questions, request additional information, offer input, and direct us to go back, work with Woodlands Academy. Again, we've had a, a strong working relationship in the past, a good track record. Work with the neighbors, make sure both parties understand issues from each side, and, and really explore if there's some ways to do more than this does to soften the impacts of the operation of a non-residential use adjacent to those single-family homes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, for that thorough overview. And with that, we do move to meeting procedure number six, which is questions and requests for clarification from the board to the petitioner's staff. So I would imagine many of our board members here have some questions. Not to put you on the spot, Board Member Bass, but I think maybe starting from you and working our way down, unless you don't get ready to ask some questions here.
Kathy, a question for you. If some portion over the years, an improvement wanted to be done, such as anything to the roadway, would that be something that would be either a new special use, or it's not a new special use permit, but a amendment to it?
Looking in the future?
No, no. In the past, had Woodlands wanted to improve the roadway back there, would that have been something that would have come before our board? Or was that...
It really would depend on the extent. Again, clearly, the air photos show that that roadway was there. If they wanted to resurface it, that wouldn't have come before the board. I think this is before the board because of the combination of elements that are in the project. But it really is the magnitude of change. This area hasn't been the focus of any, in detail, of any of the previous special use permits.
And I know we've heard about complaints with lights and noise, but how often is that, are you receiving complaints, or how often is that coming up?
I have, through the years, on occasion, received complaints about dust from the gravel, which could be addressed by paving. I certainly have received complaints about headlights, about noise, and about activity in the late night hours.
And has there been communication with Woodlands about it? Or is it more, what sort of solutions have come of those?
I think in years past, we've had conversations. But I think, again, it's really all coming to a head right now because of the focus on this area of the campus. I did meet with Woodlands Academy a few times over the last couple months, and we certainly discussed those concerns of the neighbors. We talked about the property line, potential improvements, and minimizing impacts.
There hasn't been any, over the years, there hasn't been any significant changes to landscaping or any sort of those efforts made to correct some of those issues?
Not to my knowledge, no. Nor has the city requested it. Again, I think the focus is now on this issue because of the larger project proposed.
We're just trying to get a sense of the responsiveness to issues raised by neighbors over the years. I understand with attempting to get the approval now that it's being wrapped into the larger project, but I'm just wondering kind of the history of it, of what sort of improvements have been made to correct some of the issues that have come up.
I don't remember specific discussions about issues in this area. Certainly, as I mentioned, the city staff has worked very closely with Woodlands on bigger aspects of the campus, particularly in the last 10 or 15 years. So there's always been good cooperation. I think in recent years, we haven't had a reason to be in communication as much. But my sense is, in the past, Woodlands has been responsive when issues have come up.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go next. Question for Kathy. The Woodlands property is in the R4 zoning district, right?
Correct.
So what would the setback be for a tennis court in the R4 if it weren't a special use?
The setback for a tennis court on a single-family property is 20 feet from all property lines for a single tennis court on a residential property.
Okay. And the parking in the rear was approved in, was previously approved by the city, right?
The 2013 master plan does indicate parking in that area. To my knowledge, the city never received a specific plan that, a dimension plan with striped parking spaces, which we would normally require. I think it just never evolved to that point. Obviously, the area was never paved. Normally, we do require parking areas to be paved. So the designation of parking, some parking behind that gym, was part of the past, the current approved special use permit and master plan.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. In terms of when you just asked about the R4 with residential, my understanding was, I just want to make sure I heard this correct, you're moving the tennis courts 25 feet from the property line. Okay, because right now, they're a lot closer, and you're going to move them more forward. The other question I had is, Kathy, you mentioned about a fence. I saw fencing there, and I don't know, maybe I imagined it, but I saw like a wood fence, like a high, like six-foot, eight-foot fence, but I don't know how far down that went.
And I'm not clear, perhaps Woodlands knows. I don't know if that's Woodlands' fence. I don't know if it's multiple owners. As I observed it, the existing fence isn't in great condition.
No, it's not. No, it's not. No, I agree with you, okay? The other question I had is, are the tennis courts going to be locked? Because I noticed that there's no lock on those tennis courts. So that means, yes, I know you have the sign saying no trespassing, but anybody, you know what I mean, you're not supposed to trespass, but they're going to be tempted to go on. And I just was wondering.
We haven't really fielded that question, and we haven't considered locking it. But it doesn't mean it can't be. It just never really has come up.
Okay. I was just thinking that because I know I remember reading one letter where they were concerned that it was being used possibly for something different. And I don't know when that occurred, whether it was a weekend or something, but maybe somebody, you don't know. It could have been somebody from Woodlands, or I don't know the logistics of that. And maybe that person's speaking tonight, I have no idea. That was one question. The other thing, that the drainage, it's great that you're doing that because I'm telling you, I mean, it's really, you need help. I mean, it's like you walk and you're like in mush. So the question I had is, you have all these different storm drains, you're doing it, and you're elevating it up. Are you reposition, like, how are you, because you have sandbags, so your gymnasium doesn't get flooded.
Oh, you noticed that?
Oh, I mean, I was full of mud. I was like, are you kidding me? And then the drive-around, when you have for the pavement and all that, obviously, you're going to, you've done some design, I'm sure, of how to do that. Are you putting a storm drain? You know, because it's very bad, the drainage.
Yeah, I'm glad you were able to see that. It amazes me how long I've worked over there at Woodlands and all the times I've gone over there and seen the sandbags at the gymnasium. So there is an inlet nearby, but the storm sewers aren't sized to handle these huge storms. So there has to be an overland flow path to get it away from there. So the way we're going to do that is actually lower the roadway. So that gravel parking lot and the roads that are out there, we would lower that down about nine inches below the ramp going into the gymnasium. So rather than everything pitching towards the ramp, the top of the ramp will pitch away towards our pavement and then slope further east towards the tennis courts. And then we have an accessible ramp where we have to dip the sidewalk down for accessibility issues. That will create our overland flow path to let the drainage that can't get in the storm sewer to get out onto the lawn and to continue to flow south across the athletic field.
Okay, thank you. That helped me. And then, oh wait, I had another question. I just want to reiterate, you're not doing any lighting on the courts, but I notice you're doing new lighting around the gymnasium and all that for safety. In terms of the nose lights, it looked like to me that don't reflect out, they reflect down, and they can give you, am I correct?
Correct. The tennis courts are not lit, and that lighting is on-building security lights. And the new version will have a shield to stop the light infiltration onto the property line.
Trying to find my other question. Okay, I'll find my other question in a bit, sorry.
Thank you so much. Before we move to you, Board Member Nomet, could we put up maybe the visual of the entire site? I think that'd be, Michelle, our petitioner, somebody.
Do you want the plan?
No, go forward three, please.
The one with A, B, and C?
Yeah, with A, B, and C. With all the alternates, all the sites, the entire property. That's the one. Thank you. I think that's helpful when we're all speaking and asking questions, so. Please, please.
Sorry, I apologize. Just remember, you said that you're going to have a no idling. I'm just kind of curious how that works because being at a school, it's very hard to say no. Like, I'm just curious how you're going to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're right. It would be a policy that we put in place, and the commercial vehicles would be much easier to control than I think a parent that's simply waiting for their kid to come out of basketball, you know? But I think we can, our parents are cooperative. I think our parents and the commercial vehicles, I think it will be effective. It'll be more effective than what we have today. But the hope is that, you know, we are a very environmentally conscious place, and I think that will fall into our mission to be concerned about the emissions that these cars produce.
And one more thing, on the pavement thing, you have a turnaround, right? And you've got a drop-off. So is it going to be big enough for two cars to, so another car can keep going around? So like, if you have a person dropping off, it's not holding up the whole line? Is that your vision?
Yes, to pass, yes, correct.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no, please, thank you so much. Board Member Neering, any questions?
You mean me, Board Member Nomet?
Oh, Dope, I'm sorry. I'm going the wrong way.
Thanks, Kathy.
Sorry.
I apologize.
Because you raised issues about how much the additional cost would be to use one of the alternate sites, what's the overall cost of your intended project?
I don't know, to be honest. We don't really know what the entire cost of the project will be. It really hasn't been figured out. We haven't bid this yet.
Okay. I'm only asking because I'm trying to put the perspective, put it in perspective for what the additional cost would be. So if it's $277,000 on a $5.2 million project, you know, you need context for that.
Yeah, I'm hesitant to give you a figure out of the air. But I can provide that, we can provide that at a later date.
That would be good, okay. When staff answered the question about, Ari's question about the headlights and the noise, how much activity goes on back there during the evening hours where there would be headlights and cars idling?
You know, obviously, the headlights are more predominant during the winter months when it's darker earlier, and we have basketball. So basketball practice, basketball games, you know, generally, you know, they're cleared out of there by, you know, 9:00, I would say. We probably, you know, during the height of the basketball season, there's probably, and it really is predominantly a parent parking place. The kids park at a different lot. But there are, there could be two or three games during a week and practice. But generally speaking, the parking comes during the games.
Is there any way to move that access to the gym to the front, so the kids would walk through the school?
We explored that.
To come out to a front door entry exit?
There's a challenge with securing the school from the inside and isolating the entrance to the boarding school and other parts of the school. We don't have the ability to partition that off.
Okay, I'm not familiar with the building. And what commercial activity happens back there? That there are trucks that are backing up and beeping and all that stuff that was alluded to earlier?
Not usually trucks, but small buses that transport teams will be back there.
Okay.
It won't be able to fit a large coach bus, but, you know, a small, we have a Woodlands shuttle-sized bus.
Okay. I saw on the plan that there's a spectator viewing section. Is that going to be bleachers or rows of seats, benches? What's the plan?
At the current plan, they're benches that march along there. We don't have any plans for bleachers. We have small sets of bleachers on the field that are like four risers high.
Yeah, I've seen them on the other playing fields over there.
Yeah, that would, and they're mobile. But the plan is to have benches. That seems to be more effective for tennis viewing than a bleacher.
Okay. But if the cause was, if a need for bleachers was there, you would probably consider it?
We'd consider it, yeah, yeah.
You answered the question. Oh, summertime. Do you, I've lived here, I've lived in Lake Forest for a long time, and my daughters participated in summer programs at Woodlands, summer camps and things like that. Do you anticipate using these courts for purposes like that?
That is our hope. We have had camps in the past. We will certainly have preseason camps for our teams. That hasn't been flushed out yet, but that is, yes, that is, is a hope.
One of the camps that one of my daughters attended was a licensed camp to a third party who rented the Woodlands' fields. Is that something that could happen here, too?
I don't know, I don't know if I can field that question for you. I'm going to invite Linda Mooney, who's the chair of the board, to speak on that.
Right now, we are not renting out the tennis courts to anyone at this point. In the future, I would hope that we will have summer camps that use those courts ourselves. But I can't speak to whether or not we would lease them out to someone else.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That was, oh, do the tennis courts have to face north-south? If it makes an alternate site viable, couldn't it be considered that you juxtapose them in a different way?
It's very, it's very challenging to do that. The sun exposure creates an unfair advantage to one side or the other, so.
But you flip, everybody has the same, same bad side. It's part of, part of playing.
Every tennis court that's constructed is north-south.
In order to be IHSA-approved, it can be north-south.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. I didn't know that. What was my, I think that was it? I think that's all I have.
And we'll have another chance to answer questions, so.
Thank you, very much.
Board Member Clemens.
My question is, I'm sure in the hierarchy of sports, field hockey and soccer are probably a priority over tennis. But was any thought given to putting the tennis courts on those soccer and field hockey fields? It's nice and flat, but it'd have to be lined up three and two and put the soccer where the tennis courts are? Guess not.
I'm not sure how to answer that 100% because I'm not sure what that available space next to the building is in terms of a soccer or a field hockey field, you know, if there's the room for that. That hasn't been explored.
Because if you lay the space that's allotted for tennis now into that field, it fits very nicely. But you would have to do it three courts and two courts. And you could put the soccer and field hockey back where the tennis courts are.
Yeah, if you, if you put them in one of the others' facilities, then you've just got to find a home for a soccer field and a field hockey field. So it's, I know that the field to the east of the school gets used a lot for PE classes.
Yeah, that would be the one thing I would add, is that we do, we do currently use tennis as a unit for our physical education program. So that is why, and we don't do organized soccer, per se. We use that open field for the PE classes. So that's, the importance of having the tennis court proximate to the gym was high in our priority list for the PE classes.
I have another question. Do they play on the softball field as part of gym class?
Not as a part of PE class.
Okay, so they don't use any of the other fields as part of PE?
They use the kind of utilitarian field.
That's next to the gym?
Yes, south of the tennis courts.
Thank you.
Anything further? I have two questions. The PE classes, what time of day are those? Are those significantly scattered through the day? Is there a set time? Is it after school?
PE classes are during the school day, and they're throughout the school day because everybody, you know, the 133 girls have, all have PE class. So, and they're, every other, every kid has them every other day. So half of the school has it one day, half the school has it the next.
And then looking at alternative site A, was there thought in pushing it further to the west? And then looking at alternative site A, was there thought in pushing it further to the west? It appears that this visual we have has it slightly further to the east than the visual that I think either was printed or offered later on in the context of the black grading plan.
So there is the roadway that comes across with a cemetery right here and then this continues on up to the, to the cell tower. And then this gets access to the viewing area for the softball field. So, I mean, I think you can scoot it over some, but then you have to reconfigure access. And what did get cut off a little bit here is this grade starts to come up quick, real quickly, coming back up around the softball diamond. It's sort of like a berm along the southwest side of the softball diamond. So it's, there's a berm and people can sit up on the hill there and, and watch the softball games.
I think I have one more question. If you look at the, the subject site as proposed, is there an ability or something that's preventing it from potentially being moved further to the south to create a larger setback between the residential properties to the north?
So our, our issue there was really getting, getting our, the retaining walls for the grading and preserving that area for the stormwater management. So that's, that's how we landed there.
Thank you. Any further questions, Board Member Nering?
Just going off of that, oh, sorry.
No, no.
Going off of that, in terms of where you had location D, you mentioned that you don't have the cost yet, but what's the size of the wall that you would be doing for retaining wall there?
On the, on the existing site.
For this location, is this the one you're talking about?
Yeah, the one, yeah, right there.
So like, really, let me see where you go. I could have graded this thing off at a four-to-one slope and got it down to grade without these. But this is also sort of set up as kind of like a seating place. So they're only like 18 inches high so that students can go out there and sit.
Oh, got it, okay. Okay. And then the other question I had is that after you figure out what the storm drains are and if it ends up being as a possibility in this location, if it can be moved more south, would that be a possibility? Would that be an option? Or is it the location building off of what you were asking? You know, because you said, you said you kept it open because of the drainage and to try and figure all that out. Would you be, would you move it more south?
I don't, I don't really have an issue with moving it if it, if we can accomplish the stormwater. You start to pinch the one, the one corner.
Right, I was just, I was just curious. I didn't know because, I mean, the way you have it makes sense with the driveway and all that stuff, but I didn't know if you can move it up. Okay, and then you did mention, just to recheck, that you said if there was any seating of any kind that you guys do or what have you, it will be on the south side? Okay, just checking.
Go ahead if you have more, please ask.
When you were talking about in terms of the team with drop-off, are you talking about like the teams would be dropped off on the roundabout? That'd be really quick, but when they come to pick them up, would they just call the buses and say, come on over and pick them up? The team's ready to be picked up, or?
That's correct. They, we would have the buses waiting for them on the, the ring road at some point and then, and then they would be called in.
Okay, because I was gonna say it would be a real big traffic jam with the bus and all that, okay.
Yeah, it would have to be controlled.
Okay.
Board Member Clemens, I think you had more questions?
I'm gonna rephrase my question. The schematic that we were given states that this is a field hockey and soccer field, which you've indicated it is not, that it's, it's next to the classrooms. Could those tennis courts be moved into that space? In a configuration of, you know, three and two?
We, we use that space. I mean, we would lose that space for PE for other uses.
But could you use the space that's currently occupied by the tennis court for PE?
Perhaps, I mean, it's the same intensity of use. You know, we, I, I don't know necessarily what's accomplished by that. You know, you have kids playing tennis or you have kids running in the field, you know? So I'm not really sure and, you know, it hasn't really been explored because I think the, the feeling was that the use was, you know, the same intensity, whether it's flipped or not.
Thank you. I think unless we have more pressing questions, I remind the board we'll have an opportunity to ask questions later on in the process. There's a number of people from the community have been patiently waiting. And unless somebody has a pressing question at the board, I'd like to move this forward. Thank you very much. I'm gonna, we're gonna move on to the public testimony. We swore everybody in at the beginning. I have a number of forms that were filled out by people that asked to come and testify, or give testimony. If you did not have a chance to fill this form out, we're gonna invite people at the end, after I call these names, to come up, get sworn in and, and offer their public testimony. So with that, I'm just gonna go down the list here. Mr. Adam Kingsley. Mr. Kingsley, I have a form you filled out for an opportunity to cross-examine. And that, if you could see on your agenda, is number eight in our meeting procedures. Certainly, we welcome you to come and, and give public testimony at this time, but I would ask that you limit it to public testimony. And if you do not need that, ask that we wait until your cross-examination. But I give you that option. Do you need to, would you like to offer some testimony at this moment, sir?
Yeah, I would like the opportunity to, to cross-examine at the, at the end. First of all, I am an attorney and I'm representing the, the neighbors to the, to the north. So I, and I know my clients all want to speak, so I'm gonna hopefully be very quick and get out of here as quickly as possible. And I would like to reserve my time to cross-examine if I could also just make a few introductory remarks.
Yes, please make your remarks now and we're gonna hold your cross-examination till after we finish with number seven, the public testimony, and allow everybody here their, their moment as well, sir.
So I want to start with a different aerial photo. And this is taken from the Lake County maps, mapping website. And what this shows is the, as you can see, the north part of the campus. But it also shows, which you didn't see in full, all the neighbors who live to the north on the, on the north-south property line. And the, those little lines, which you're probably having a little trouble seeing, are actually the, the names and addresses of all the different neighbors to the north, many of whom are, are here tonight. And I, I think Ms. Ernieak said something that I thought was interesting. She says the, the city values the, the school as an institution. And I'm happy to hear that. But I hope the city also values the neighbors as an institution. And you're going to hear from many of the neighbors, their personal experiences with the existing courts and their fears and concerns regarding an expansion. And make no, make no mistake, this is an expansion from two courts to five courts. So, you know, they've got some issues with what's going on right now, but that's, whatever's going on right now is going to expand. So this is not a modest or a moderate expansion. This is a doubling or more than doubling of the existing size of the courts, meaning the existing use of the courts. The other theme that I want to express is that, you know, the neighbors don't have options. They, they can't go anywhere. They're, they're there. The school has lots of options. We, you, you all sort of saw the options that were, were set forth in the, in the report. And then, you know, cogently, you start to talk about all sorts of other options that might exist for the, for the school, including moving the courts to the, to the south and on the eastern part, possibly combining some of the A, Bs, and Cs so that you've got, you know, two courts on an A and, and two courts on a B. And by the way, I'm not quite sure why it has to be five courts. Why not four courts or three courts? And I, I think, and if you reduce the number of courts, you might also reduce the number of, of so-called grading issues. Although, there are also grading issues and stormwater issues with, with the site that the village, the, the school wants. I mean, this is the school's preference. And they clearly say this is an aesthetic preference, that these courts can be built on any of the locations, A, B, or C, and maybe even in different locations. This is a 41-acre campus and the courts take up, and I did the math on this, about 0.7 of an acre. So there's lots and lots of options here. It's simply that the school doesn't want to do those options. What they want to do is put them closest to the neighbors. And you're gonna hear from the neighbors why that is a negative option for the neighbors. This is, the school has options. You, you've been exploring them. We continue to explore them. And now I'd like you to hear from the neighbors about why the option chosen by the school is the most negative option.
Thank you, Mr. Kingsley. Next up is Carol Sorensen. Hope I pronounced that right. I apologize in advance of anybody's name that I butcher. We swore you in at the beginning, please, please offer your testimony, if you may, at the microphone so we can all hear you. And do your best to limit to five minutes if you can. Thank you.
I will. In fact, my letter to, that I wrote to the board, I think, has about as succinct as I can put my issues, so I will just read it. As a homeowner on Highview Terrace and Lake Forest, I am concerned about Woodlands Academy's proposal to build the five tennis courts up against the backyards of a substantial number of residents on this street. I have read the proposal and I have several issues with it as follows. Firstly, primarily, is the nuisance factor, specifically noise and proximity. According to lawyers Lovegrove and Cotton, a private nuisance in law is when one person substantially and unreasonably interferes with another person's land or use of their land. Unlike trespass, an interference can amount to a private nuisance even if it is not direct or intentional. Odor, noise, pollution, and even encroaching trees are being constituted as a nuisance in common law and may grant you a right to be given compensation or damages or to have the nuisance remedied, unquote. The proposal states in several places that tennis courts have existed in that location for several decades without a negative effect on the neighborhood. However, that was two courts, not five. Five is different from two. I am assuming Woodlands Academy proposes five courts because they expect to be using five courts at the same time. That amounts to 10 to 20 people running and grunting essentially in the neighbors' backyards for a good part of the school day. Also, the proposal states they expect to have IHSA matches on their home courts. Where are the spectators to be located and how much noise and traffic will they generate? Not to mention how many strange people will be walking up and down along the neighbors' backyards. When Lake Forest Country Day School and Lake Forest College have games, they can be heard here on Highview, many blocks away. How much more so would these games be heard in the backyards? The proposal states 25-foot setback from the neighbors' properties, this is only about the length of one and a half parking spaces. It would be like having a front row seats to a super-giant unwanted big-screen TV going all day in your backyard. I would think this would seriously impede the quiet enjoyment of one's property. Most of the properties sit much higher than the plane of the courts, giving them a bird's-eye view. This means the landscape buffer would have to be much higher and deeper than what is proposed. The existing so-called sparse buffer is actually quite a substantial thicket of good-sized trees and buckthorn hedge. Replacing them with a few evergreen bushes would not be sufficient. And whatever the landscaping, it would not significantly buffer the noise. Improved parking sounds nice, except that more parking equals more cars, more traffic, more people, all going up and down along the neighbors' backyards. The second issue is property values. Woodlands Academy claims the houses have been bought and sold for years with no diminution of property values. First, how do they know? They're just saying so is not sufficient. And second, as stated before, five courts is not more than two and impacts more houses. I submit there could be an invisible property value decline in that some buyers may simply not offer on a house with tennis courts in the backyard. And if they do, they may offer a lower price. Woodlands Academy claims their proposal would not be injurious to uses and enjoyment of other property or diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. First, I've explained how this could impair enjoyment of property. And second, again, how can they know this expansion will not impair property values? There is an expression in finance that says past performance is no indicator of future results. I submit that these expanded tennis courts will in fact impair enjoyment and property values. Also, it is highly inappropriate that Woodlands Academy, which pays no property taxes, should impair the enjoyment and value of properties of homeowners who do pay substantial taxes for the enjoyment and value of these properties. This third issue is need. Woodlands Academy claims it is a hardship to transport half-class to off-site locations to play tennis. I submit that it is a healthy warm-up, cool-down walk to public courts in South Park and also that it is not necessary for the whole class to do tennis at the same time. They can split the class with some doing tennis and some doing something else and rotate the students who do tennis. Woodlands Academy claims that expanded tennis courts is necessary for the continued success of the school. I highly doubt that. Their primary responsibility is education. There is no educational value in tennis. Tennis has no intrinsic value. It is just a game, at most an amusement not required for success of the school. I urge you to seriously consider these objections to the expansion of tennis courts at Woodlands Academy. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sorensen, before you step down, could you state your address for the record? I don't know if you do.
865 Highview, Lake Forest, Illinois.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Carrie Johnston, 755 Highview Terrace. Please do your best to limit to five minutes so that everybody can have a chance. Thank you.
We acknowledge that you received letters from current students, their parents and alums. However, with all due respect, none of these individuals have, I'm sorry, none of these individuals own property adjacent to proposed project. None of them, none of you. It's safe to say the residential owners of Highview Terrace are still in disbelief of our predicament. Here a school of, I heard a new number tonight, I had 142, but I guess it was 133, is trying to commandeer our privacy, our property rights, while diminishing our genteel way of living for a collection of tennis courts located 25 feet off of our property. Woodlands wrote, "It's a modest but meaningful improvement." For whom? And how does it benefit the residential homeowners? What happened to the golden rule? Simply put, we treat others as we would want to be treated. See there, see there is a predicament in place which speaks to the neighborly posture. The existing tennis courts are not limited to students at Woodlands. It's not limited to tennis, not limited to day, daytime hours, and definitely not limited to the school year. For the resident owners, it's noise, 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 and increasing by the day as the weather improves. Activity on the courts is easily heard in our backyards. As a matter of fact, I have a tape with me if you want to hear it. Many speculate that so much activity that hosts boys and girls must be a revenue source for the non-taxpaying school. So with the increase in courts, the issues will be compounded. More spectators, more vehicles, more unauthorized parking of buses, which will contribute to the degradation of our comfort and quality of life. These courts are a luxury, not a necessity. Woodlands does not have a membership. They have a membership, but it does not include women's tennis at this point. I called down to Bloomington, Illinois and spoke with someone. Interestingly, the current version of the master plan, Phase Two, approved by the city in 2013, was void of tennis courts. Woodlands analysis of the four location, four locations admits they have options. In the process of engineering for the soccer and softball fields, Woodlands challenges were overcome. And those locations are now level and productive. were overcome, and those locations are now level and productive. Space remains in two locations for tennis courts. Abundant parking and bathrooms are established. Woodlands chose the present location because of aesthetics, not grading issues. Also, there was a mention of conflict with sports, that you cannot have soccer and tennis at the same time. The sport seasons prevent that. Early spring is soccer, late spring softball, early fall is tennis, late fall is basketball and volleyball. Based on the proposed plans, how does the backyard location of the expanded courts and parking benefit anyone but the school? And based on the new proposed drawings, please explain how the new courts could be legally placed in the proposed location, given the 50-foot setbacks delineated in the 2008 architectural plans. Neighbors have been complaining for years to the school and the city about noise nuisance due to school events, traffic, school buses idling, all adjacent to Highview neighbors. Yet these activities continue unabated. I will close with a simple question. How would you feel having five tennis courts, an additional parking, 25 feet from your property line? Again, Woodlands has options, we do not.
Any questions for me? 755-HIGHVIEW-TENNIS-TERRACE. I'm right in the middle of the floor.
Thank you so much. Now, next up is Ralph Elwart, Elwart, 748-Waveland Road. Please state your name and address for the record as well, please.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Elwart, and I live in Ward Two at 748-Waveland Road. My wife and I have been residents of Lake Forest for more than 33 years, and our children are graduates of Woodlands Academy of the Sacred Heart. I was on the Board of Trustees at Woodlands for 17 years, six of which I served as Board Chair. I had intended to detail the school's history, but my time is short, and significant dates were already provided to you. Remember that after 100 years of operation, Barre College was forced to close its doors. Survival is not a sure thing. In that same difficult environment, Woodlands survived and thrives. You are aware that anonymous donors purchased the Barre campus with the intent to donate it to Woodlands, and that the title was transferred to Woodlands on December 12 of 2012. I represented both Woodlands and the anonymous donors before the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Plan Commission, and other committees, including, of course, the City Council, during the acquisition of the campus 10 years ago. 2010 to 2012 was a very exciting time for our Woodlands community. It isn't often that any school receives a gift of this value and this size, which in this case reunited the original parcel of land purchased in 1901 by the Society of the Sacred Heart. We've had many meetings with the city and with neighbors and friends of the school. We heard that the front lawn, the site of Shakespeare on the Green, was an area that neighbors and friends would like to remain open and unimproved. The school agreed to this. The city indicated that cell service with antennas previously located atop Old Main must be continued. Well, as a matter of basic human safety, we agreed and worked with the city and the federal government to find a viable solution. The amount of buildable land on the campus is already limited because of ravines and wooded areas, and these two items further reduced the buildable land. The Board continued to the very serious task of planning for the future, this time with the additional property. For a responsible, nonprofit Board of Trustees, planning for the future does not mean looking a week ahead, a week or two ahead, or even a year ahead. A responsible board plans one or two generations into the future. The Board of Trustees developed a vision for future use of the newly combined property by studying the property characteristics, consulting with educational and land use experts, meeting with neighbors and friends of the school, and by continuing discussions with the city to determine its interests, all in an effort to make the best decisions for the benefit of the school, the city of Lake Forest, and for the neighbors of the school. The strategic vision we developed covered many aspects. In the near time, it involved the location of roads for all access to all parts of the campus, adequate parking for a variety of activities, and a walking path for use by the general public. We located the athletic fields along the front campus to maintain the open views of the property along Wesley Road. Several space holders for potential buildings were located as well, buildings which would require access without disrupting the ongoing activities of the campus, as well as access to gas, water, and electric utilities. The tennis courts and former soccer field would remain in place and would still be close enough to the locker rooms to be available for physical education classes within a time constraints of academic scheduling. We also plan to increase the number of tennis courts. The school is now looking to add three tennis courts, not the four originally envisioned. This would keep Woodlands competitive in more ways than one. A lot of time and thought went into this planning process. Throughout the approval process 10 years ago, the school and I felt that its interests and the city's interests coincided very closely. It felt like the city and the school were working together on common goals. Given the research and discussions by the Board, along with a continual review of the school's developmental needs, I believe then as now that the school and its Board are in the best position to plan its future, to identify the needs of its current and future students, and determine how best its property is to be used. Requiring the school to relocate tennis courts, which have been in place for more than 50 years, would further restrict the amount of buildable land available for future use. I believe it will also cause the school to ask what current areas of the tennis courts could ever be used without objection. I believe Woodlands' planned use of the property satisfies the criteria for approval of this amendment to the special use permit and is as reasonable today as it was when the strategic version was created a decade ago. I fully support this request, and I encourage the Zoning Boards of Appeal to approve it.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Marlena Parr, 711-HIGHVIEW-TERRACE.
I've already sent my letter of objection to the backyard project, but I have some other items that I wanted to address that were not in that letter. This is things that I've had personal experience with. Number one item is just a week or so ago, I was watching TV in my upstairs room when I heard a loud music blaring. It was about 9:00 PM or a little after, so I jumped up to see where the noise was coming from. It was coming from one of the vehicles parked on Woodlands Academy property behind my home. It was so disturbing because I could actually hear it over the volume on my TV, and no, my windows were not open. Is this going to become the norm when conferences and competitions are open? Is this going to become the norm when, yeah, will we have to hear fans and students screaming and yelling during the competitions being held at the tennis courts like they do at all ballgames? How will Woodlands control the noise level of the students and their friends and families and of the visiting competitors so as not to disturb the residents who are trying to enjoy their backyards as a refuge of peace and serenity? I cannot think of any private entities that have tennis courts located this close to taxpaying residents of communities. We all know kids like to have the music blaring in their cars to get attention. How can you control them? Has the city determined an acceptable noise level for neighborhoods? If so, what are they? This noise just isn't in our backyards. It travels two or three streets over and maybe even farther. Second issue. Last summer, Woodlands Academy contracted to get a new cable installed on their property. I woke up one day to find a group of men in my backyard with a noisy backhoe and other equipment. They had opened the chain-link fence and had started digging up my flower beds in the corner of our yard. I was not given any prior notice or even a knock on the door to let us know they were going to be there. What a breach of privacy. The next week, a different group of men appeared and said that the previous group of contractors had mistakenly dug the hole in the wrong location and should have been at the pole down the line from us. Woodlands Academy should have given the neighbors a heads-up about the construction, and they should have had someone out there monitoring the job to see that it was done according to specifications and not improperly invading our backyard, but they did not. So three different times, we had men in our backyard stringing large cable all over the back of our yard and into the center of the backyard. Flowers were trampled, holes were left for heavy rain to puddle in. This was just one small construction issue that lasted maybe five or six days over a period of three to four weeks. What are we going to do for a whole summer of noise, dust, and pollution during construction? And that is if they actually get it done within the estimated completion time. Most construction projects are not. After a ruined summer or more of construction, the noise will be issuing from fans yelling and screaming for their team to win at the competitions. We taxpayers deserve better than this. Why do they need five tennis courts for 18 girls that are partaking in tennis? That seems like they're wanting it for future for competition. They're a 501(c)(3) corporation. Are they going to be making money on this and turn it into a commercial entity? Who knows? When we first moved into this home, there was a breach in the fence on the backside of our property. We actually saw students using our backyard as a pass-through between Woodlands Academy property and ours. After finding discarded burger wrappers and french fries lying around our back step, we had the breach in the chain-link fence mended. Evidently, students would meet their friends to have lunch in our yard because the house had been vacant for a few months before we bought it, so they must have thought it was safe to do so. Was anyone monitoring these students? Needless to say, we are deeply concerned about the noise that is going to happen during construction. If Woodlands is allowed to continue with their first option, we are also concerned about the recurring noise and pollution from diesel buses, trucks, and cars, as well as the noise from students and fans during competitions and regular daily use by the academy. We moved to this neighborhood because it was quiet and peaceful, and we want it to remain so in the future. Our neighborhood is a quiet residential area of taxpayers, not a commercial entity who proposes bringing in paying or otherwise potential noisy visitors. We taxpayers are the ones who will be adversely impacted by this unwanted and noisy project. Woodlands should be a good neighbor and respect our rights to peace and calm. Woodlands would not be adversely affected by using one of their alternative sites in their own sports complex. That's the only logical place to put the courts. They have choices, we do not. Please respect the rights of actual taxpayers and vote no on this location for their project. And I'm appalled that they don't even have a cost for this project. They've got costs for all the extra different things. This is just another example of them not doing their job properly.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Tammy Rocha. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
780-SOUTHRIDGEROAD. But please state your name and address also for the record.
Tammy Rocha, and I live at 780-SOUTHRIDGEROAD here in town, Lake Forest. Good evening. As I mentioned, Tammy Rocha, and I have lived in Lake Forest for over 35 years. My daughter and two of my nieces, all three raised here in this community, are Woodlands Academy graduates. And I, myself, am an alumna and as well as a retired 25-year employee of the school. So this evening, I'd like to share a bit about the history, and it perfectly relates to the questions, Mr. Bass, that you had, was about the earlier history of any type of interactions between the school and the neighbors. So since last fall, with the advent of the Backyard Project, interactions have significantly increased between Woodlands Academy and its neighbors. In contrast, spanning over the past decade, so looking back at that timeframe, only, to what I understand, only four interactions occurred between Woodlands and its neighbors. These interactions are as follows. On June of 2021, a neighbor asked that landscapers not arrive in the student parking lot prior to 7:00 AM. Although no work was being done until 7:00, just the trucks were arriving then, their request was granted. So Woodlands made the effort to accommodate that request. In March of 2021, there was a request to move a trailer and one of the school shuttles to a location other than the back gravel parking area, as the resident did not like the view. The trailer and school shuttle were moved to a different location immediately. Going back to August of 2018, ComEd needed to work on the transforming a neighbor's yard. The neighbor asked if ComEd could enter through our land to do the work, thereby avoiding extensive disruption of the neighbor's property, and the school did request, grant that request. So again, really working to be a good neighbor. And then finally, going back to October of 2016, a neighbor was concerned that branches from a Woodlands tree might fall and damage the fence. Very fair to be concerned. And then this neighbor was also concerned about the higher branches from the tree possibly affecting the power lines. The latter is ComEd's responsibility. However, Woodlands promptly hired an arborist to trim both the low and high branches. As a member of the Lake Forest community for well over 100 years, Woodlands Academy remains committed towards being a good neighbor while educating young women in the Sacred Heart tradition to be positive change-makers in the world. On behalf of Woodlands Academy, I wholeheartedly support the proposal plan of the Backyard Project. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Stuart Allen, 883-MORNINGSIDE. Please come up to the podium, and I'll swear you in. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do, yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, and then you may proceed.
Maria Allen, and it's 883-MORNINGSIDE, and I'm in Ward Two. And I'm just going to be very brief. I just want to talk about how much Woodlands is a part of the community and a good neighbor. One of our five goals is, and the fourth goal, is building community. Events that Woodlands opens their door to in the public are cultural events such as our Christmas concert, our spring concert, Vespers, fine arts display, and school plays and musicals. Woodlands opens its door to the public for Christmas Eve Mass in conjunction with St. Mary's Church. We invite the public to attend our C-suite panels, held several times a year, where executives speak about the paths their careers have taken. Woodlands even invites the public for Halloween trick-or-treat events. But mostly, Woodlands property is used by neighbors who stroll and walk their dogs. Some of them have even installed gates in their own personal fences to have access to our property. The majority of our property adjacent to Wesley has a public easement, and the 1.5-mile quiet trail running through the campus was envisioned and dedicated by alumni Susan St. James and her husband in memory of their son. It's open to the public. This stands in contrast to Lake Forest Academy and Lake Forest High School, where security is waiting as soon as you access the grounds on school day. Those are just a few examples of how we have our campus open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Mike Mooney, 600-EASTWESTMINSTER.
Hi there, everybody. I will be, I'll be brief. My name is Mike. I'm newer to Lake Forest. I'll just give you, just as somebody that really raised their kids downtown, I have to say that we were drawn to Lake Forest as a new resident for several reasons. We found it to be extremely friendly to people. You can't walk down the street without everybody saying hello to you. We love the downtown. We're drawn to all the institutions that this place has. There were two colleges. Now sadly, just one college, as Barrett went away because it really became, you know, substandard from the standpoint of its size. It just didn't have enough critical mass. But it seemed to us that the community really did a lot to support the institutions. If we think about Lake Forest College and all the activities that go on there and the students that are always up and down, I think they enrich our community. If we think about, you know, the high school, think about all of the activities that go on there, the games, the camaraderie, the community that comes together to support the high school, I think that is important. There's also other wonderful institutions, you know, whether you look at the day school, whether you look at Woodlands, whether you look at the Gorton Center. These things are treasures, and they're treasures because we allow them to be treasured. because we allow them to be treasures. Yes, any one of these could cause some noise, but that noise is joyful oftentimes. I mean, you think about high school girls that are out there playing tennis. You know, if you think about, I guess it was in 1861, Lake Forest was incorporated, and its motto then is the same that it is now, love of science and nature. And so, you know, one of the things that I think Woodlands does is, there is a love of science. There is education going on there. And on a forty-one acre campus, there is nature, and that's a benefit to this community. And so, we have been, we moved here, worked downtown. There's a lot of different communities we could have taken and lived in between downtown and Lake Forest, but we really felt that this was a special place, in part because they really do, as a community, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, really are supportive of some great institutions. And so, I would like to ask that the board consider those things and allow this to go forward, please.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have David, or Dave Paddy, five seven zero. I can't read that. Is that Golf Lane?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
I believe something to be desired. Hi, my name is Dave Paddy. I live at five seventy Golf Lane. My wife Jen and I moved here with our two kids twenty years ago. We've raised our kids in this community. They went to Sheridan Elementary School to Deer Path Middle School. Our daughter was a 2017 graduate of Woodlands Academy, and our son went to Lake Forest High School and graduated in 2020. Both had wonderful experiences. I'd like to make just a couple points in support of the proposed improvements to Woodlands grounds, the theme of which is the relative modesty of this proposal compared to some of those that have been done at the other two high school alternatives in town, Lake Forest High School and Lake Forest Academy. Lake Forest High School, in 2006, a referendum passed for fifty-four million dollars to cover renovation and major infrastructure investments at the Lake Forest East and West campuses. In 2008, the adopted plan added music wing, academic area renovations, kitchen and dining hall renovations, a new common area, a new media area, and renovated locker rooms and fields. Lake Forest High School is currently developing a new master plan. While the plan is not done, the school has already committed fifteen million dollars in improvements in the next three years. Lake Forest Academy, from 2005 through 2014, LFA conducted a sixty-nine million dollar capital campaign and made dramatic and much-needed physical improvements to the campus. Improvements included renovations and expansions to the academic facilities, a new student union, new dining facilities, a new student center, new faculty housing, new dormitories, a new gymnasium and fitness center, and improvements to the pool, ice rinks, and parking areas. And more recently, LFA converted three outdoor grass fields to turf for field hockey, softball, soccer, and lacrosse, and a new health center. Woodlands, as we've heard, was built in 1961, and at that time, two tennis courts were installed to their current location. The last campus improvements include, I'm sorry, last campus improvements occurred in 2012 when Barra and Woodlands campuses were merged. Generally, that renovation involved removing building space and increasing green space. A decade later, we would like to make some modest campus improvements. We at Lake Forest are very lucky that our town offers three exceptional alternatives for high school students. Woodlands does occasionally have to make improvements in order to remain a viable alternative to Lake Forest High School and Lake Forest Academy. Relative to the improvements made by those two schools, we feel our request is modest and much needed.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, Elizabeth Sperry, seven five four Highview.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the CBA. My name is Elizabeth Sperry. I'm sorry. Is that better?
Is it on?
I don't know.
Yes.
Okay. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and zoning board of appeal members. My name is Elizabeth Sperry, and I live at seven five four Highview Terrace, directly across the street from the five subject-proposed tennis courts and parking additions before you today. Before I continue, I just want to note, and I know I speak for my colleagues and neighbors here today, that we are not opposed to improvements or developments or the additions of tennis courts at Woodlands Academy. We welcome that. What we are opposed to is that these tennis courts are put within twenty to twenty-five feet of our backyard properties, because as been said already and repeatedly today, they have options, three that were outlined on the petition, and two more, which, thank you, Mr. Clemens, you brought up as well. We do not. We cannot move our properties, and that is why we are all here today. With that being said, I'm also the designated managing broker, and I'm the branch vice president for Culpeper Banker Lake Forest. So let me start by addressing both the realtor's letter that you have in your packet, as well as the comments of Ms. Hudson, both of whom supported the Woodlands Academy development, and mention, quite frankly, that property values would not be depreciated. In the interest of time, I'd like to bring two properties to your attention. One was pre-COVID. This property was seven six five Highview. It's immediately opposite the courts. Four-bedroom, three-bath, twenty-three-hundred square feet. It closed in 2019 after being on the market for over four months. It closed at six hundred and fifty-four thousand with an original list price of seven hundred and thirty-nine. That list-to-sale ratio is approximately eighty-six percent. Let me give you an idea of what real estate's like right now, and I don't think I have to tell you. In 2019, we had close to four hundred single-family residents here in Lake Forest for sale. COVID changed everything, thankfully, and we're now down to sixty-seven active property listings. So let me give you another recent close. This one is located at two fifty South Sheridan Road, and if the petitioner would like at some point to put the proposed site plan slide back up, and perhaps our attorney can ask that of her, we can show you exactly where it's located. It's located due east of the multipurpose athletic field. This home was listed over a hundred and ninety-seven days ago. It finally closed in December. The list-to-sale price ratio was sixteen percent, meaning that it closed at eighty-four percent of list. Let me tell you how profound that is. First of all, properties on average right now are selling within weeks. The average days on market is under a month. A balanced market is six months of inventory. We are on fire with multiple offers and listings. So for a property to take a hundred and ninety-seven days and to close not at one point eight five million, which is where it was listed, but one five five zero is significant, significant. Keep in mind, too, that this home is perpendicular to the proposed five lots, five sports courts that are going to be put in. So let's not kid ourselves. This will absolutely have a profound effect on the resale and value of the fifteen homes on Highview that are immediately adjacent to this proposed project, this proposed development. Let's move on. One of the tenants, in the criteria for evaluating a request for a special use permanent amendment that's before you tonight, is that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted and will not, will not substantially diminish and impair property values within that adjacent neighborhood. I would ask, knowing this, how can you possibly approve this petition as it is before you now, this special use request? The legal definition of a nuisance is any physical condition that interferes with another person's reasonable use and enjoyment of life or property, and I quote, "When a land-owning entity carries out an act on their land which negatively affects and impacts another person's use or quiet enjoyment of their own neighboring land, this is considered a nuisance." I'm sure you all agree that by adding significant impermeable surface, a turnabout, a student drop-off, a landing area, and five sports courts just twenty-five feet from my neighbor's backyard is indeed creating a neighborhood nuisance. Knowing all this, I would ask that you end this neighborhood nightmare and deny, not continue, deny this special use permit request, thereby creating a win-win solution for both parties. By asking that Woodlands relocate their tennis courts, their development away from neighboring homes, you have reached the best solution for all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Brian Perry is next, seven three seven Highview Terrace.
Thank you very much, members of the committee. I wish I had a visual, but I'll try to describe it to you. I've submitted a written testimony that includes some annotations showing my property, seven thirty-seven Highview Terrace, which, if you look at the turnabout, it happens to be right at the twelve o'clock mark on the turnabout. Our fence is presently probably fifteen feet or more from where cars are currently driving. Under the proposal, our problem, my wife, myself, our seven-year-old, and our three-year-old daughter, we utilize our backyard an awful lot. We enjoy tennis noises. I actually find that Woodlands has been quite a good neighbor to have in the three years that we've been there. We've not had any complaints. We expect lights. We saw those when we bought the house. We expect noise. We heard that when we bought the house. But under this new proposal, I feel that the turnabout gets extremely close to our backyard where our children are playing. As drawn, as staked out in their backyard, we're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of three to five feet from our wooden fence as it gets into our backyard. As I presented in my annotated photo that I sent, our daughter has a playhouse that abuts this fence. So I was once a sixteen-year-old driver. You were sixteen-year-old drivers. We had, you know, I backed into my fair share of signs. I jumped a curb or two. I had a friend who admittedly drove his car through the front door of a Papa John's pizza joint. This happens, right? I will have fears at night thinking about my three-year-old daughter and her playhouse with nothing between herself and a sixteen-year-old driver, but a half-inch piece of wooden fence that we've put up and three feet of mulch, bush, maybe a tree. I don't know how we fit a tree in there. I will have trouble thinking about that at night, given how close the turnabout will be to our property line. It seems extremely close to property lines, not understanding the zoning situations in Lake Forest or other communities. It gives us a little bit of pause. So I would respectfully request that we consider alternatives to the turnabout situation, and I very much appreciate your time tonight. Excuse me, my voice is shot. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Paul Haman, Ameen? I'm sorry if I said this. Five eleven Beverly. Please state your name appropriately for the record. I apologize.
Paul Hammond, sixty-two-year resident. I support the Woodlands Academy request. For sixty-two years on my back patio, I have listened to birds sing and children play at Woodlands Academy. Sad day when tennis courts are now classified as a nuisance. I'm surprised that children playing is now considered annoying. I believe Woodlands Academy picked a site close to their building, so children will have the most time playing and not walking to a remote location. I enjoy the bird singing and children playing. I support Woodlands Academy one hundred percent.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Mary Schalise, Schalise from Glencoe, it appears. I don't know.
I don't know what you're supposed to be.
Well, I don't care. Oh, okay. Before we continue, I'm going to ask the audience to refrain from applause and the like so that we can continue with, continue with this hearing in the most appropriate fashion. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mary Schalise. I'm a resident of Glencoe. And I was wondering, am I still able to speak today, this evening?
Yes, you are. Please, you must limit yourself to five minutes.
Okay. That won't be a problem. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I just wanted to let you know that I myself am a Woodlands alum, and I had two daughters go to Woodlands, and one of them was there most recently, but she's graduated, and she participated in the tennis program for all four years. And I didn't realize, I realized back in nineteen seventy-nine, I just gave you my age, it seemed like the tennis courts were really old then. And back then, two was never enough. But they do need to be close to the school. They need to be close to the locker rooms and for, throughout the day, for gym class. They did back then, and they still do now. They can't be far away on where the Barrett campus used to be. But anyways, I just wanted to give you a perspective of a parent, because my daughter, after school, was on the varsity tennis team, but she wasn't able to play at Woodlands because they didn't have enough courts. So she had to get to Waveland Park. And it always struck me that, gosh, the Woodlands girls are using these courts at Waveland Park. That really should be for the Lake Forest residents and the people who live near there. But it was not, then I thought, well, but it's nice that we get to use them. Our girls get to use them. But it was extremely stressful for her, because she didn't have a car, even when she was sixteen. We didn't have, we didn't, she didn't have a car. So she'd have to bum rides from girls right after school. Can I get a ride over to Waveland? Please, please. And twice, there was one, one girl was so stressed out getting tennis practice at time, she got a speeding ticket. And there was another time where they almost had a car accident. And I always was frustrated that there weren't more courts at Woodlands. So these young girls who are just trying to participate in extracurricular activities and to stay healthy had to go through that just to get to practice. And then also, they were self-conscious about, you know, when they had their matches, because the schools that they played against came from far away, like Francis Parker, Latin, Elgin, they're driving from miles away, and their matches always had to take longer because they didn't have the courts at Woodlands. They only had two. So you had to wait longer to play a match. So I really think, once they have five courts, actually, the matches will be shorter. So I just wanted you to hear my perspective of being a parent and the stress of being a varsity player and trying to get to Waveland Park. And I also live, my backyard is the Glencoe Park District, and it's the baseball field for all the little boys in Glencoe. And I agree with Mr. Mooney and the gentleman from Beverly. My husband and I knew when we bought that house that we would hear kids. You obviously know what's going around your house when you decide to purchase your home. We absolutely love to hear the boys play baseball. It is pure joy. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes the list of people that I have that signed up. Is there anybody else that would like to offer public testimony that has not done so yet? Please approach the podium. Yes, please, ma'am. And I'm going to swear you in, and I'm going to ask, oh, did you swear in earlier? Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, then.
My name is Marie Irocolo. My address is one forty Morris Lane, Lake Forest, Illinois. I'm a parent of a current Woodlands student, and I want to talk to you about what Woodlands means to this community. We were residents of another North Shore suburb, and we decided to move to Lake Forest because our daughter really found a home at Woodlands. And so there's a benefit to the community of having Woodlands. The benefit extends not only from a commercial or property value or a family basis, but it also extends because the girls at Woodlands are actively involved in non-for-profit organizations and giving back to the community. The Sacred Heart goals that someone referred to earlier, goal number three, is social awareness to impel action, and those girls take that very seriously. There's a minimum requirement of seventy hours of community service. Some girls do over two hundred and fifty hours in their four years at Woodlands. A lot of those organizations served in the community are here in Lake Forest. I can speak personally because my daughter has actively been involved in Lake Forest-based organizations. Paws for Patrick, Lambs Farm, there's Fill Your Hearts for Kids, Bernie's Books, there's the Boys and Girls Clubs of Lake County, there's Feed My Starving Children. the Boys and Girls Clubs of Lake County, there's Feed My Starving Children, Great Lakes Adaptive Sports, Aquarian Connections. These girls are really making contributions to this community, and not only for today. The whole goal at Woodlands is to not only have the volunteer hours and what you learn from volunteering and being active members of the community, but our hope and our dream for our girls is that they'll continue to be active members of this community far into the future. So for that, we request an approval of the Woodlands plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to start at the left side of the room and work my way to the right as I'm looking. I'm sorry. No, we're going to follow the procedures as outlined, so as we're going to go, if there's anybody on this side of the room that has yet to speak who would like to, ma'am, please, please approach. Did you swear in at the beginning?
I did.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Megan Morris, and I'm at 2010 Knollwood Road in Lake Forest. I'm a parent of two tennis players, past tennis players at Woodlands Academy. Maddie and Kate both played four years of tennis. Neither one of them went on to have a career in tennis, but we truly believe that the four years that they had playing a sport and being a part of a team was extremely beneficial to not only their high school experience, but going on to their college experiences. As a parent, I remember pulling in, taking Maddie in 2012, and taking her earlier in the summer to try out for the tennis team, and pulling back to the gravel road and kind of looking for the tennis courts and thinking, wow, this is kind of awkward back here. You don't quite know what's going on. And we left half the kids there, and then the other half of the kids went on to a different park in the community. When I told them that Woodlands was going to be getting new tennis courts, there was so excitement, so much excitement. They were also part of the soccer team when the soccer team played on the field close to the school, and then the excitement and when they were able to move to the new space. Sports are really important, and I think that we all see that, and particularly at a school like Woodlands, you're often the underdog. You're the underdog because you're at a school that is not really built on academics. It's built on the well-rounded student, and the nice thing about athletics at Woodlands is that everyone plays. So even kids who come in with experience play with kids who have never played the sport before. It's a real team-building opportunity. But you're the underdog. So when the teams do come in from other schools, there usually is that, especially for tennis, when they've had some of the tournaments played on the, some of the teams would play on the two courts, the other teams would play at the neighboring parks. You get used to the commentary of not having quite the facilities that the other high schools have. When they, before they had the soccer field renovation, that was, you know, a downhill slope, and so everyone always knew that there was the advantage based in the field. And then the pride, the pride that the school, the pride that the parents, the pride that the students felt when they moved the new soccer field, once that land had been donated and they were able to renovate that. It was amazing, the energy felt by the students, felt by the parents, and even people who came to visit who had said, oh, my gosh, this is so nice. There's so much more that this offers. I hope that it'll be a serious consideration for the new tennis courts. As I said, my girls didn't go on to have a career in tennis, but I think it's a really important part of their education. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. In the back, please, please approach. Did you swear in earlier? When you approach, I'm going to ask you to swear in when you get to the microphone so we can all hear you. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, then you may proceed.
My name's Regina Lind, and I live at 338 East Westminster. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I had written a letter in support of Woodlands because I have a daughter there now, and I had another daughter who graduated in 2005. But hearing you people talk tonight, I just wanted to say to you, I've spent the last two years of Catholic, and it tests that she's probably sick of hearing me complaining, not complaining, protesting a development across the street from us on East Westminster. And I have to say, so many of the things that you're saying just resonate with me because it was the way that I felt, and I think you were at some of those meetings too, I think. But the thing I wanted to say is that, you know, what we're talking about here is very, they're different. Like, we were upset because we felt that what was happening across the street was motivated by greed, and it was disrespectful to the historic nature of that area. Here, what's happening, I think, is a little bit different because there's some, Woodlands is not greedy. They're, they're good people there, and I know this from my experience there. I respect them. And I think the thing I respect the most is their teaching young women to be, to be powerful and to speak up and to, to make something of themselves. It's, it's women, young women's education. I think that is a huge thing that you can't find just anywhere. It's just, it's very special. And that's all I wanted to say. My heart goes out to you. I know exactly how you feel, powerless, angry, you know, like people are stepping on your rights. I get that, but I think you just have to balance that against what, what's happening at this school. It's not what's happening when a developer comes in your neighborhood and does mean things to you. And I believe me, I appreciate your flowers.
We're not against school or test.
I know that.
I'm sorry. We're not here to have a dialogue.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your time.
Moving, I see a hand back here on the left, so I'm going to, you're the first, I'm sorry, sir, I saw her first. Did we swear you in at the beginning?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kendall Davis, and I live at 781 Highview Terrace. Mine and my husband's property abuts directly the tennis courts that do exist currently. And I noticed something that happened a few weeks ago. It was Saturday, March 5th, which, like, in the late afternoon, I think it was around 3:00, there was a Little League team practicing on the tennis courts. And I know, I believe that Ms. Talty had mentioned that they weren't going to be renting it out or utilizing it for any other purposes other than for Woodlands Academy. And so I'm just wondering, it's a question, really, why, why was there a Little League team practicing baseball there? And my other thing is, is I, I fully support Woodlands Academy. I had three aunts that attended there. I went to Loyola Academy myself. I think that, obviously, education and sports go hand in hand. I think it's very important, but I just think that for our neighbors, it's just, it's in our backyards, and that's what we're concerned about. And if it will be, if there will be renting it out to other things, I think that we're entitled to know that. I think that we just need to be upfront with one another so we know what will be in our backyards. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. The gentleman in the back left. Did we have a chance to swear you in, sir? Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, then you may proceed.
Sean Mooney, 600 East Westminster. I'm the older brother of a current tennis player at Woodlands Academy. She has homework right now, and I would like to speak on her behalf. Question before the board today is an economic one. Does this project incur significant cost on the neighbors? You have three real estate experts who have given their opinion. One, that you saw in the presentation, that it would essentially be a wash. One testified that it would increase the value of the neighboring properties, and one that it would, it would decrease. I'm a housing economist by training. There's an extremely difficult calculation to make, and I would like to explain why, given these three opinions, you should default to approving the project. This isn't an investment in the health and capability of Lake Forest residents who will generate future economic value for the area and for our country at large. I can personally speak to the cognitive benefits of tennis. I suffered from a traumatic brain injury recently and have used tennis to rehabilitate. Specifically, the visual tracking is critical to many areas of cognitive development, notably applied to reading, as well as the kind of visual aspects of mathematical understanding. Just to briefly consider the alternate locations, in the presentation, you saw the estimated increased cost of construction. I saw $200, $300,000 in that presentation. We mentioned the overall project value is not certain, and that's understandable, given the ongoing adjustment to the complaints of neighbors, you know, the shielding on the lights, the shrubbery, et cetera. It's a, it's a large calculation, but we did see for, for the courts specifically, not including those extra costs, that there would be significant increased costs of the alternate locations. And while $200,000, $300,000 may not seem significant to offer a nonprofit that has kind of a limited market in terms of people that can get into the school, that is extremely significant. The continuance of Woodlands Academy in this area is not guaranteed. And every single, I personally believe that every single action should be taken to ensure its permanence.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who has not yet spoken? Gentleman in the green tie, please. Did we get a chance to swear you in, sir? Well, let's swear you in, then. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, then you may proceed.
My name is Scott Nels, NEHLS. I live in the neighborhood at 766 Highview Terrace. And I emphasize that word because you see even by the dynamics in the room, there is the neighborhood and there's everybody else. And the neighborhood does not approve of this, let's be clear about that. There is no one who's getting up here and telling you from this neighborhood that they approve of it. But the one thing I wanted to draw out, I think they're trying to make it a kind of all or nothing proposition, and it's clearly not that, and let me reiterate that. What we're trying to say is we disobject to the placement. We don't object to the improvements. We don't object to them fixing drainage. We don't object to them increasing the amount of tennis courts. Maybe it should be only four. Maybe they should put on a different field, but we object to where it is. And the idea that we are somehow destroying their institution just by virtue of insisting that they don't put something in our backyard is really a non sequitur. So I just want to disabuse that notion. And not only that, what they're asking us to do by essentially making it a matter of us against the institution is they have essentially provided no information to anyone here about what it is that they intend to do. The materials are sorely lacking. They, instead of providing actual comparative market analysis, they have a single broker with unclear qualifications who didn't even show up here today, providing a single letter about three properties and claiming on those three properties that doesn't affect property value. It's irresponsible to make such suggestions. If you were to make the suggestion in court, it would be thrown out of court. And instead, someone comes up here and says in their personal opinion that they feel the same way. Again, no support for this at all. Had they really intended, and by the way, everyone who came in here knew exactly what the chief issue would be, would be effect on property values. And for them to not have done their due diligence to come in here with something that we could reasonably consider, everyone taking time out of their day to come in here to analyze this and talk about it is frankly disrespectful to people and all the time in here. On top of that, you know, they have no historical analysis as part of a CMA. They have made no reasonable projections about what's going to happen to the property values. Instead, and I think they said it best, the person they brought up here said it's just anecdotal opinion. That's not enough. And as proof of the fact that they had no preparation, they've given us nothing to work with, one of the properties they put up there is my property, and as an example of an improvement in values. But the reason it improved is because the people who lived there before us built a huge addition. So, I mean, the idea that they're even picking that property out, they're not taking into account any of the improvements, is just frankly preposterous after hours having sat here for this, and it's disrespectful to the neighborhood. On top of that, they have no information regarding environmental. They talk about wastewater drainage. We see nothing about it. They talk about traffic. They've done no traffic studies. These are all things that customarily happen in cases just like this. And then, to top it all off, they don't know the actual cost. All they know is what it will cost for them to not do the things that we want. That is the only thing they know. And again, the idea that we're attacking the institution is not the case. We're attacking the process. We're attacking what is going on here, and we're attacking the fact that they won't tell you what they really intend to do. And you heard examples here, people using these courts for things other than intended. I know my son, you know, plays soccer in the basketball courts. I know that they lease these things out. They will lease these things out. There have been no assurances given to anybody that that won't happen here. So really, I have nothing more to say. I mean, clearly, if they wanted to come prepared, they would have at least come with an estimate of the cost. And it's preposterous to think that they don't know how much it costs. They would never have been proposing it if they didn't have an estimate. Clearly, they do. They're not telling us information we need. They're not telling you information you need, and we honestly deny it, not contingent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The gentleman in the, whatever color your tie is, sir, I can't tell from here. Yellow. I'm sorry, yellow tie behind you. I apologize. Did we swear you in earlier? Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, then you may proceed.
Michael Walagora, 747 Highview Terrace. That's directly behind the proposed turnaround. And my main complaint comes from the 25-foot setback which went to the tennis courts, but that's clearly not consistent with this roundabout, which comes nearly to the property line and is, if my neighbor's at 12 o'clock, I'm at 3:00. And that's actually my much bigger concern about this project is how the parking and the turnaround and the drop-off is being executed. And that's my, that's my main issue, and I will reiterate that there are other options for locations of the tennis courts and all of those things that have not really been explored, but I certainly disagree with the setbacks for the proposed turnaround and the parking area that they proposed.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else that has not yet had a chance to speak? It looks like the second row from the back. Yes, ma'am, you standing up, absolutely. Did we have a chance to swear you in earlier? Please state your name and address for the record, then you may proceed.
My name is Rami Lopez. I'm happy to give you my address, Mr. Chairman. It's 410 East Woodland Road, but I would like a clarification on that, actually. As I recall, a plan commission meeting, Regina Lind's point, it was on condo three, a former alderman happened to call in from Florida. Now that I think about it, he lived on Highview Terrace, and he was calling from Florida. And several of my friends had high objections to him calling from Florida. How dare he? And I thought, well, why shouldn't he? So I did call the state attorney general, and they said there is no state requirement to give a street or an address. So please check that out. I'd like clarification. You can call from anywhere. Thank you for your attention tonight. I've read the conditions for a non-residential special use permit in a residential area. The Lake Forest staff report on this proposal and Woodlands Academy's statement of intent, which includes its analysis of three alternative sites for the tennis courts, parking lot paving not included. I also visited the site, and I went a couple of backyards to take a look. Since I don't live right there, I was just an interested party here on how this special work, use might work. To that gentleman's point, the information in the packet was not very useful to me because the scales were not provided accurately, so I was trying to estimate where the flags were. It seemed to me that the, the flags were not placed at the outer limits of the proposed retaining walls, which made the site seem smaller than it actually will be. Actually, the packet did not say, it didn't have any information, it lacked a lot of information, such as whether a new fence of any kind, particularly a soundproofing or sound-insulating privacy fence is proposed by Woodland. Likewise, excuse me, well, the topographic maps were not very helpful either. So, so understanding the wall that would be built, the retaining wall, was very difficult. Another important missing element, which is a requirement to your review, is the special use criteria that other people have brought up, the injury to the public comfort and use and enjoyment of other property. The injury to the public comfort and use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity. The city's staff report asks Woodland if the frequency, duration, volume, and impact of activity, i.e. noise, on adjacent backyards can be reduced. That's in the staff report, that's a question. I'm the former community relations director for Chicago's airports, and so I had direct responsibility for the noise abatement office there, know something about noise. And I believe for the following reason that that, the noise severity cannot be reduced. If a sound is 70 decibels, if I'm speaking to you at a normal tone of voice, and you add just 10 decibels to that, the sound is exponentially increased. It will be 10 times more intense, and it will seem twice as loud to our ears. That impact increases as ambient noise decreases. So, whenever it's relatively quiet in a neighborhood, the impact of noise is greater. Late afternoon, the evening, and certainly the night, when it comes to aircraft, we had to double the amount of noise impact. So, the thwack of balls and raised voices will be far greater than today. Back to the question, can the frequency, duration, volume, and impact of activity be reduced in any way? So, in the case of Woodlands Academy's tennis courts, I don't believe there's any sound fencing possible that would help in this case to mitigate the noise. Any solid structure would block the neighbors' views of the open space of Woodland, and the, and the open space of Woodland is part of their property values. It's gorgeous, it's like looking at a park. So if you put up a solid fence, you've reduced the, the view. The proposed loss of the buckthorn, which is providing, it's screen, it's unsightly, it's invasive, it still acts as a noise buffer because of its density. The landscaping proposed by Woodlands is too spare and not dense enough to replace the 15 feet of existing woods. I would note that it would be great if Woodlands could start to replace the invasive buckthorn with dense shrubbery, regardless of the tennis courts. And by the way, the nuns in the cemetery really need your attention, Woodlands. The alternatives analysis, one more point, please. Suffice it to say that this tennis court should be moved elsewhere on Woodlands campus to meet special use standards one through four. In addition, the staff report states that used by outside groups is, quote, "not part of Woodlands' current special use," and that Woodlands has not made clear its intention. So that is a fundamental question, in my opinion, that needs an answer before you grant a new special use. I hope you'll agree that these courts are just too close and too intense for the neighborhood, and that rather than continue this, this petition, unless you can keep the public hearing open and consider alternatives under the public hearing, that you close it and reconsider at a later date and a different solution. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody who's not had a chance to speak yet that would like to? All right, seeing none, we've reached nine o'clock. This board is going to take, is five minutes enough time? Or do we want to take seven minutes and reconvene at 9:15? Why don't we reconvene at 9:15, and we'll move on to agenda item number eight at that time? We're in recess until 9:15. Thank you.
I don't know that it's a problem for you. You've got to take your daughter.
My wife came and scooped her up.
Thank you.
Okay.
She was, she's nine. I had to.
Yeah. Now she's.
I was texting to make sure that they were on their way.
Okay.
Highly distracting, but there you go.
Mark Knowles. I think this is good.
I can show you.
The next thing is the screen crossing.
Make sure the future is six.
Oh, sure.
I'm sure.
That's awesome.
That's cool.
And then when you.
I can show you.
You could just flip it back and forth, and then you'll.
Yeah.
I'm just seeing if any screen, if any screen turned back on.
I'm going to try to get you guys viewing.
No.
I know what happens.
Yeah.
I think they went on shoes.
Yeah, they went on shoes. So, yeah, they're coming back.
Okay, but yeah, I was at work and I tested. So when you have desks, they come to me, I say it's on my three-foot stool, I just test it just for seeing if it's not the stool that you have. You push it.
I think I screwed it at school, and so I threw it in.
So I mean, I, this is my first day, I was very brave, so I walked around.
Okay, so now that I took it.
I know.
It's going to need a little water.
I'm coming over.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I was just waiting.
Seven minutes, I think I'm just going to.
I can feel it.
I'm coming over.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'm going over.
I'm coming over.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'm going over.
I'm going over.
Okay, you know, it's.
I can see.
Okay, I'm going over.
Turn off.
And it's just.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm sitting there, I'm sitting there, I keep trying.
I'm trying to take.
This is a cool.
I want to try.
I'm trying to take.
I'm going to try to talk to you.
Four hours.
I'm going to try to talk to you.
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 Definitely a more interesting one than I.
I'd, I'd like to get back started here, so can people please take their seat?
It's a big deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, booty fairy money.
It's been wiggly for a few days.
Okay. All right. Zoning Board of Appeals is, is back in session. I appreciate everybody's patience. We are now on to meeting procedure number eight, the opportunity for cross-examination. In order to cross-examine, you have to, requires the submittal of a request to cross-examine prior to the meeting. We received one request from Mr. Adam Kingsley. And we have a second request from Robert O'Donnell, but I believe, Mr. O'Donnell, you're here to represent Woodlands Academy.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any cross-examination. I just, I withdraw my request.
Okay. But you will be potentially responding on behalf of the petitioner, is that?
Yes.
And can we swear you in quickly if we haven't?
You have.
We have, okay, wonderful. Mr. Kingsley, would you like to come up here? And please, again, introduce yourself for the record. You've already been sworn in, sir, so once you do that, I'd ask you to proceed. And try to keep your, I think we try to limit cross-examination to 10 minutes, is that right, Kathy, roughly? So try, try to be as succinct as possible, recognizing that there's a lot of material here, so we're going to have some leeway with that.
I, I will, and I really appreciate the board's time. I know this has been a long meeting, and I, and I will try to be succinct in my, my cross-examination. The first question I have is like two questions for Ms. Zerniak. As part of the, the packet, you put together sort of a graphic of where the supporters lived and where the objectors lived, and I believe that you've put that with the post of the comments, is that right?
Yes.
And, and if I, if I'm correct, your, your map of where people lived, show that all the objectors lived very, very close to the, the project?
Yes, for the most part.
All right, well, maybe I can pull up that, that graphic that you, that you had prepared. It was sort of close to the comment section, was it after the comment section?
I believe it might have been the last page.
All right, well, that will make it easy for me to find. Okay, so that was the, the chart that you prepared, with the yellow being the people who were in opposition, and the blue being the people who were in favor, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and you've got, you've got some additional comments after you prepared this chart?
After we prepared this version, yes.
Okay, and, and the additional comments pretty much fall in line with the, with what we're seeing here, with the objectors being neighbors directly to the north, and the people in support being, living further away?
Yes.
And then I want to ask you a question about the 2012 approval. That was the last time that the, that the special use was amended, is that right?
2013, I believe.
2013. And what I'm trying to locate is, as part of the 2013 approval, there was a master plan associated with that approval, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and I know that's in the packets, and I'm trying to see if I can locate it here. If I can't, we'll, we'll live without it. You were involved in the, in the process by which the 2013 plan was approved, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and that was actually, it was approved by ordinance, right? There was an ordinance passed by the, by the city?
Yes.
And attached to that ordinance was a, a map of the master plan entitled Woodlands Academy Master Plan Phase Two, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And that was actually, it was approved by ordinance, right? There was an ordinance passed by the, by the city?
Yes.
And attached to that ordinance was a, a map of the master plan entitled Woodlands Academy Master Plan Phase Two, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And that was part of ordinance 201354?
Yes.
All right, and just out of curiosity, is that at all part of the, the packet that you prepared for the, for the board?
Yes.
All right, what, can you just tell me approximately where it is so I can pull it up here?
That is after the staff report, after the historic air photos.
I think you just passed it.
Okay, I'm going to, I'll slow down here.
Find the title page that says background and current special use permit.
Let's see, that's the application, that's still the application, the application. Okay, well, you know what, I, I don't, I can't get my finger on it right now. Hopefully, the board will see it. But let me just ask you a question. On that master plan, the, there's a, E is designated softball slash all-purpose field, right?
Practice.
Yeah.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yes, E is titled softball, all-purpose field.
Okay, and F is entitled field hockey slash soccer field, right?
Correct.
And with respect to tennis courts, you can see the outline of the existing tennis courts on there, but there's, there's nothing on that plan that's labeled tennis courts, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this was prepared, this master plan was approved about nine years ago?
2013.
Right, and, and how many hours did you spend working with the, uh, Woodlands Academy in, in developing, uh, having hearings, and ultimately having that master plan passed?
I, I don't know how many hours I spent.
Was it all, you feel like it was a lot of time you spent on that project in, back in 2013?
I spend a lot of time on every project, so yes.
Was there, you recall any mention of, of tennis courts, of the need for new tennis courts, uh, back when that plan was approved?
I don't recall that being discussed in 2013.
All right, if I could, uh, ask some questions of, of a representative of the school who has the most knowledge regarding the current uses of the, of the courts? Okay, and, and so, I know we've heard some, some testimony, but just to be clear, currently, these aren't being used exclusively for tennis, right?
No, they are not exclusively for tennis, it is our outdoor hard surface area for gym classes. We do not have an air-conditioned gym, so the ability to go outside is important, we do other activities on the tennis courts.
And you would expect the new tennis courts, the expanded tennis courts to be used in the same way, correct?
By the same number of girls who are currently at school, yes.
Okay, and i- in terms of, of when the courts are used, I think we've heard testimony that they're not just used during the school year, they're used during the summer also?
We currently are not using them during the summer, we have had camps in the past, and hopefully have camps in the future where they are used. Actually, the, the tennis season, practice does begin at the beginning of August, so during the summer, the tennis team does begin practice.
Just so I'm clear, that the camps that you've had, sometimes you've let other, um, clubs, schools use those courts?
I'm not sure, honestly, whether or not they use the courts or not, game on for girls.
Thank you. For girls, would be a group that, who might use them.
Well, haven't you let a local lacrosse league use the courts for practice?
No.
And the, the courts are sometimes used after dark, aren't they?
They're not, they're a group who have permission to go onto the courts, who went out late, and they were to stay.
What, what group is that?
The baseball academy, eighteen-year-old kids.
Okay, and why would the Lake Forest Baseball Academy think that they had the right to use those courts?
I don't.
Has, has the school ever received any, uh, money for any, from any institution for, for renting or using the courts?
That's my not, I'm not.
Okay, and who would have the most knowledge regarding those issues?
I don't know.
We had turnover with our head of school and, um, our finance person, our CFO, so I'm not really sure who would be able to answer that question historically. I do know, um, in the past number of years, no one has used them.
Okay, but your, your, your goal is to have, um, camps and clubs use the new courts, is that correct?
We have a goal to have camps, whether or not we use the courts, I don't know.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not following, you.
We intend to have summer camps, I don't know whether or not that will include tennis.
Okay, but you, but the courts are used for things other than tennis as well, isn't that correct?
During gym class.
Okay, and, and by other institutions as well, correct? All right, if I could ask some questions of Mr. Black, you still here? Yes, you are. And so you presented some new information tonight, correct? In terms of, of, of costs?
I did look at costs.
Okay, but that wasn't part of the, the, the packet, or the application that was submitted by the, by the school, was it?
I just looked at those costs on Friday, so it was just last weekend.
So sort of, sort of a back-of-the-hunkle, uh, calculation?
We consider the rough order of magnitude, chair.
Okay, and ju- just to follow up on something that, uh, Member Novit said, you haven't prepared any analysis of what each of the different, proposed locations would cost in full, correct?
Well, no, I mean, there's, what I was looking at is things that I knew were above and beyond what they were contemplating. So obviously, where the location that they're at, they have two courts there, they need to build three more. The other alternative sites are, you know, more courts, uh, more grading, more retainables.
But to be clear, you don't have an estimate of the total cost of any of the, the five different alternatives?
Well, when it came up with, uh, Ms. Novit asked the question of, you know, is this 5.2 million dollar project? I took a look at, uh, I just did an estimate while I was sitting here, that it's roughly, uh, 250 by 120, you know, and like, basically like a parking lot with three inches of asphalt, six inches of stone, um, and I'm, came up with an estimate of probably around 325,000 for, for that, to build five new courts, so say you took the soccer field, and you built five new courts there, uh, so you don't have significant amount of grading, uh, and you just put in there, you, you grade it, take off the topsoil, put in the stone, asphalt, put the fence in, paint the courts, landscape, I'm gonna guess it's about 325,000.
Right, to be, but to be clear, the, 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 um, tool preferred option, there's some problems with that land as well, right? It's got some drainage issues?
Well, the only drainage issue is the, the flooding of the gymnasium, so it's not related to the tennis courts.
Okay, but isn't that a very swampy area, have you been out there, walked that area at all?
Uh, yeah, I walked it today, and it, you know, it's a little bit wet, but it wasn't, I didn't get mud on my feet.
And there's a gradation there as well, isn't there, isn't there a gradation of six to seven feet?
There is some grading, sure.
Okay, uh, and, and so, so you're not simply building court, courts on a currently flat area, you've gotta deal with the grading of that site as well, right?
Well, to a much lesser extent, because there's two courts already there.
But you're changing the location of them, you're, you're moving the courts, right?
Uh, yeah, you are, you're sliding them about ten feet south, so, uh, you know, ninety-five percent of the court you're still using.
You're gonna keep the, the same court there, you're not gonna do any type of resurfacing, or?
No, we would, we would peel off the asphalt and, and save the base underneath it, and just get a new surface, so all five courts have a, a new surface on them.
And the base is there, and, and there since what, 1961, you're, you confident the base can be used, reused?
Yeah, I mean, it's not like vehicles are driving on it, and, I mean, you would go in there, take the asphalt out, regrade it, reshape it, but it's the same elevation.
But no, but no definitive cost estimates on each of the five separate projects and four separate courts?
Well, I haven't been asked to do that.
Okay, that's, that's okay. Now, let's talk about the, the grading issues you, you mentioned with, with respect to option A, and also option, uh, B. Now, is it true that the, most of the grading issues on option A are on the, on the east side, that on the west side, it's fairly flat, and then the, there's a, there's a drop-off on the east side?
Uh, generally, I mean, if you keep pushing this, like I said earlier, if you keep sliding this to the west, you start to get great change in the west.
Right, but if you, if you, if you had only four courts rather than five courts, that would significantly reduce your grading problems on, on A, right?
Well, I wasn't asked to look at four courts, they said they needed five.
And the same thing with, with, with B, in fact, B, there really isn't much of a grading problem, right?
B was the most challenging one that I thought, when I looked at it originally, I didn't, I mean, it, it's like you're shoehorning tennis courts in an area that they just don't seem to fit.
And C is the same issue with grading, right? The grading is, is great as on the edges, so if you reduce the number of courts, you wouldn't have to face the grading problem.
Yeah, like I said, I was asked to look at five courts, not, nothing else.
And you weren't asked to look at, say, a, a split situation where you put, you know, two courts on C and three courts on A, or any type of situation where you, you divided the, the courts up between the A, B, and C locations, right?
Uh, that was never a parameter that we were asked to look at.
Okay, that's all I've, I've got for you, thank you. If I could just ask, again, a representative of, uh, who to address this. Because I understand it, and I'm taking this right from the statement of intent. With respect to location B, I, I believe somebody felt that it was an aesthetic, the issue was an aesthetic concern, can, uh, can someone speak to that, about what aesthetics location B raises? So what, what are your aesthetic concerns with respect to location B?
So B presents, uh, heavily onto the public way, so we're right on the edge of the Wesley.
Just, just so, you said presentation, meaning somebody can, can see that from your drive-in, right?
Correct.
Okay, and that is actually the, the back entrance or the secondary entrance for the school?
Um, it is an entrance.
Again, that's the secondary entrance for the school, correct?
I don't think we'd call it a secondary entrance, it's, it's just an, an entrance, it's a primary entrance to the gym.
Okay, but your, your main entrance where you want visitors to come, and parents to come, and, and people to see the campus, is further east, right?
Uh, that is the main entrance to the school building, yes.
And, and you're, you're afraid that, that people are going to see tennis courts in, in location B, and be turned off by that, is that what you're saying?
Uh, my concern was for the residents of Lake Forest, that everybody driving down Wesley Road would see that presence of the court. And, and the, and the presence of the fence. You have a, a grading issue on that corner, and then you have the fence on top of it.
But I'm talking about aesthetic concerns.
Yes, right.
You're, you're concerned that the residents of Lake Forest who are driving on Wesley are, are, and not, not even coming into the school, are going to see those courts and be disturbed by them?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have concerns about the neighbors to the north seeing an expansion of courts and being concerned by them?
The city of Lake, when we did the initial, um, special use plan, uh, the special use master plan, the city, we worked with the city of Lake Forest to keep that, um, front of the campus open, and so that was, um, meant to be in keeping with the original master plan.
That's the, the, uh, 2013 master plan that I was asking Ms. Zerniak about?
Correct.
And that has no tennis courts identified on the plan, correct? I mean, the, these existing courts are shown on the plan, but you've got all the different letters that show all the different aspects of the campus, and none of those are tennis, tennis courts, correct?
Correct.
And you worked with the city a long time on getting that master plan passed?
Uh, Woodlands City, yes.
Woodlands City. All right, um, I mean, I've got one final question, and, and you can answer it, and Ms. Mooney can answer it, but the, the question is this. If the, the ZBA makes a recommendation, and the village board ultimately denies your request to build the tennis courts at your preferred location, will you pursue one of the other locations, the A, B, C locations, or perhaps another location on your campus?
I don't think we can answer that, honestly.
All right, I've got no further questions.
Thank you for your time, I thank you for the responses. At this point, we move on to Agenda Procedure Number Nine, I'm gonna read this. Final questions from board to petitioner staff, or direction to petitioner and staff to provide additional information. Certainly, I'm not gonna do anything to stop my fellow board members from asking questions, but to me, there is a lot of direction, at least the chair would like to provide to both petitioner and staff. I think, clear from all the public comments that I heard, um, there is some work still to do here to be able to provide and answer some questions of facts, to study the alternatives, to define the users, and potential restrictions, potential parameters of how the space will be used. And further, in, in the direction of me as a board member, I'd like to understand, uh, the further potential for Site A. To me, that one is worth exploring, and the potential to move the, the desired location set back further to the south. That's some direction I would like to give, and certainly I think would be valuable as we work together as a community, and I applaud everybody for coming here and participating. I, I think it's been, everybody's been, uh, has done a great job in sharing their comments in a productive process to, uh, reach the common goal that I outlined at the beginning, in the, in the statement from the chairman, that says that this board here to work, that, work with the community to balance everybody's interests. So, in that vein, it's clear to me that this petition is going to be continued over, kept open for additional direction to be provided to this board from both petitioner and staff. So with those comments, I now, um, open it up to my fellow board members, if there's any additional questions or additional direction they would like to give, recognizing that the chair doesn't believe these are final questions or final direction. Board member pass.
I have a question for the applicant. The existing courts, the existing two courts, uh, in A location, or, sorry, in the D location, uh, when you say that there's, that that's the, uh, outside hard-use space, um, is, is that adequate space? Meaning the, the existing two courts for your, for your multipurpose, uh, hardscape use, is that adequate right now?
Would you mind going to the podium, please, thank you.
Please, we're, we're recording, so everybody's can have a record of this, so please, come back and, I think, state your name again and who you are, so we have.
I'm Mooney, um, board chair at Woodlands, and depending on what activity they're doing outside, it is not necessarily enough room. You can imagine if you have a class of two dozen girls, and you're playing pickleball, or tennis, or something like that, not all of the girls can play at once.
Uh, the, the reason I'm asking is that, I, I think that, uh, Wavelands got the three auxiliary, or the three tennis courts, so, um, it just was looking at the sites and thinking if there was some way to do the three courts on A, and keep the two existing courts, or some, something like that, that you may be able to still maintain the hardscape and still have on close proximity to each other a total of five courts, and that would alleviate some of the grading issues that exist on, on the eastern edge of A, um, as, as a possibility. Again, that, it doesn't solve all the neighbors' issues, but it doesn't expand them.
Board member Nearing, please.
I don't know if it's possible as an idea, but have you ever thought about switching the, the turnaround to the, where the triangle is? Because what you could do is put the turnaround, and the parts that are the parking spots could be where the teams drop off their team, and they pull them by the bus, and then the roundabout, that's not, wouldn't be a roundabout anymore, could be parking spots facing the school like you had, and still have the ADA. So therefore, that roundabout part would take away from that person's house and all that, so I don't know if it's possible, if there's enough room for a turnaround, but just an idea, I don't know. Um, and the other thing is, uh, what a board member Clemens was mentioning, on one of our pictures, the field that's right next to the building, and I think it's your science building, it's called Soccer Field on our copy, it said Soccer Field, um, across on one of the copies, and, you know, more, maybe Board Member Clemens can clarify it more, but maybe is it possible that, you know, you had to have the courts facing north-south, but you have the two courts there, and then just have two more courts, the three courts right in front of it? So you have the two, and then the three, that's an idea, I don't know if that's possible, but just to try, I, different ideas. And the other one would be definitely with the, the drainage, when, if you could figure out with the city, how much can you move those courts forward away from the property lines? Because then maybe if you have to move those more forward, the driveway and the grout, that stuff moves, and everything pulls forward away from the residents. I don't know, I'm just brainstorming ideas.
Those are good ideas, or good thoughts, um, concerning the turnaround and the drop-off, and we could study that, uh, I'm not sure that it'll work, because we're, we have to take a look at ADA requirements, um, but we will take a look at that. And then concerning, uh, leaving the two courts where they are, and, and maybe putting three south of there, I'm not sure that that's gonna work, because that's gonna eat into the practice field that they have on the east side of the building.
Board member Novit, board member Clemens?
In, in reviewing the, the plan, I think Board Member Nearing makes a great suggestion about just dropping everything to the south, including the turnaround and the parking, in an effort to utilize the space so that everybody including the turnaround and the parking, in an effort to utilize the space so that everybody, so the school can use the courts for gym class, which I totally understand. But I walked the, I walked the field, I walked all the spaces on the, at the school. And I guess I would like to know why you need five courts. That's a question I have for fut-, either if you can answer it or provide it later.
We would like to have five courts for two reasons. One is to have the entire team practice all together. JV and varsity. Right now, varsity goes off-site every day.
Okay.
As well to have matches. Right now, we have JV typically have their matches on-site and have varsity matches off-site. It, it, the idea would be that four of the courts would always be in use, the fifth would be used for warm-up, and so things are continuously moving along.
Okay, thank you. That's up.
Board member Clemens, if you have any questions or direction you'd like to provide.
Well, I understand the reason for wanting to have the tennis courts near the gymnasium. They're multi-use, so it's not just tennis. I do agree that sports is an important part of education, and I applaud you for continuing to provide sports for the girls. I do believe these courts possibly can be moved, as I suggested at the beginning. Also, the turnaround could move into the area of, that's labeled green space, next to the gymnasium. So you're staggering those courts, maybe two and three, or two and two and one, utilizing that field to the north?
Thank you, Board member Clemens. Anybody else on the board like to give questions or direction? Board member, Board member Novit, please.
I'm sorry, I have one more. Sorry, guys. I would like to see a traffic study. I'd like to have some understanding of what kind of anticipated traffic there's going to be if you're going to increase the, just some kind of information about the number of cars, the time of the cars, the, if there's buses, how many, how frequently, how long are they going to sit there? I need to, I need to have a better understanding of what the, what the overall usage, average usage of this is going to be over the course of a school year, because that's when most of this is going to be. And again, more definitive information about summer usage, above and beyond the school's plans. But if there's going to be summer camps, things to that effect, I think we need to know that, so we can better judge how this does impact the neighborhood.
On that point, Kathy, summer camps and ancillary uses to the primary use, it would be helpful to know how other special use properties in Lake Forest operate like that. For instance, Lake Forest College has children's summer camps. LFO Farms has events, Open Lands has camps. It would be helpful to see how that compares to other properties.
Provide that, great.
One more thing, on the specially used criteria, number two, the impact of property values, it would be helpful to have more information on how that affects nearby properties.
I'd like to continue with that thought. I do think more empirical data with the, with the road, the turnaround. I think, Mr. Black, you mentioned how the drainage might work as far as having to excavate a little bit. I think schematics that help us understand that, what that might mean for relative location, this turnaround to the neighbors, where it might be here or in alternative plans, and how that lays out. And I think, you know, along those lines, a more fully developed landscape plan that helps us understand maybe the better size of these trees and how much coverage they may give. Exploration of a fence was mentioned. Certainly, I'm not one to tell anybody what to do, but I think having those alternatives and having them understood how that they were used to come up to the ultimate request will be helpful for this board, certainly for myself. I certainly support higher education. I think there's probably agreement in the community, and I've heard it from many people who oppose the location of the project. They're not opposed to the success of Woodlands and, and planning for this generation, multiple generations, like you so pointed out. And we, as a community, have a chance here to work together to do all that, so I'm very proud of everybody who's in this room doing that. You know, I'm inclined at this point, and I don't know, Ca-, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and what I was, I think this is where you were going, but maybe not. What I was going to suggest at this point, because we certainly are hearing all of the questions and the need for additional information and the need for the study of alternatives, what I would suggest is rather than proceeding with our rebuttal, which I think is the next step in the agenda, is that we adjourn here, rather than offering rebuttal tonight, we prepare the information that you're seeking, addressing the alternatives, and come back at the next hearing, and instead of using that time tonight to go off the cuff, if you will, that we be prepared specifically to address each and every one of the concerns, questions, and needs for additional information that you're expressing.
I certainly appreciate that offer, and I would leave it to my fellow board members. Would anybody like to make a motion?
May I ask one more question?
Please, please.
For the petitioner, before we finish. It seems like there's two projects. There's the parking lot grading and then the tennis courts. And my question is, if one were to be approved but not the other, would you still proceed with that one? Or would, would the whole thing be off the, finished?
Can we add that to the list of things we come back and answer the next time?
Sure, sure. Okay, fair enough.
Any additional direction we'd like to give petitioner, questions we'd like answered tonight? Would anybody care to make a motion along the lines of what we've been discussing?
Yeah, I make a motion that it would be great if you wouldn't mind coming back with just those different ideas. We'd really appreciate it. I think all the neighbors and everything would also appreciate it, just the different ideas, try and maybe think outside the box of what you've done. You've done a fantastic job, by the way, I just want to put that out there, so far of what you've been presenting. But if you could give us a little bit more information and data points, I think that would really help. And, you know, the traffic pattern that was suggested, and just the, you know, those other ideas. See if we can switch around the, you know, the turnaround and the other part to try and help that out, maybe move the tennis courts. One option, the other option, and then we could figure out which is the best way to go.
I think I'd like to make a motion to continue this special use permit hearing to a time at which point staff and petitioner are able to resubmit information, addressing the concerns they heard tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries. We're going to continue this to which time petitioner can address. Yes?
Chairman, can I just note, one of the reasons we ask, or the reason we ask for addresses from those who testify is so that we can be sure that they get mailed notice of any future meeting. So those of you who did provide your address, thank you, and we will make sure you're added to our interested parties list and receive notice.
Yeah, just so everybody's, we are not adjourned, but certainly everybody's welcome to leave. There are other agenda items. I remind that more to my board members here. And we, I do echo that sentiment, Kathy. We want everybody to be able to participate fully in this process, which is why we asked for the addresses. We're going to move on to number four, which is the opportunity for the public to address the zoning board of appeals on matters not on the agenda. I assume everybody was here for our consideration of Woodlands. So we'll move on to number five, additional information from staff. Kathy and Michelle, do you have anything more for us tonight?
Speaking of schedule for April 25th, we will work with the petitioner. There would be a fast turnaround. You do have, other than this, you do have a whole agenda.
Wonderful. Anything else from the board?
Will it be on Zoom?
We're going to be.
Or be in person? I'm just checking, I just thought it asked.
Party's over.
Be in person.
Yeah.
Oh, good question.
Can't work cuffs anymore.
Correct. With that, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, no, I took a, I got a big paper to write notes on. I was like flipping over the papers to write the right notes.